Also present was our very own Deputy Mayor Lorraine Bauer, and I wish to extend my appreciation to Lorraine for working this event into her schedule. So, reading from the awards program, quote, "Emma, at the age of 13, has already made her mark on the town of Strathmore. For her 11th birthday, Emma's wish was to have an opportunity to help others. Through M's donation projects, Emma filled 100 purses with donated hygiene products valued at more than $7,000 and distributed them to women experiencing homelessness. Emma has continued to celebrate her birthday supporting causes that are important to her. For her 12th birthday, she led M's Bedtime Bundles project, collecting blankets, stuffed animals, toothbrushes, and books for children in shelters or foster care. This year, for her 13th birthday, she launched a 'Hunger Sucks' campaign with the goal of raising $600 for local profits that provide food to those in need. By engaging her former elementary school and using GoFundMe, she raised $2,055, benefiting three organizations: her school's fuel program, the Wheatland Food Bank, and the Wheatland Crisis Society. Upon learning that the Veterans Food Bank was in need of donations, Emma initiated a new M's donation project and, within a week, collected 500 pounds of food. In addition to her fundraising efforts, Emma has also volunteered for the Alberta 55+ Games, the City of Calgary's Park and Play Program, the Senior Secret Service Christmas Cheer Program, which is not easy to say, the Christmas Hamper Society, and the Crowther Memorial Junior High School Student Council." So, once again, congratulations, Emma, and for the second reason why I invited you to be present for us this evening. I have a question for you, and I am very curious about what your most favorite moment was as you experienced the Stars of Alberta volunteer award process.
My favorite part was meeting all the other volunteers that were there and all their accomplishments that they had.
That's great. Thank you. That's all the comments I have, Your Worship.
Thank you for that, and congratulations, Emma. Thank you for all the work. Oh, I'm sorry, and you do have a statement. I apologize. Would you like to make your comments now?
Sure. I just want to say how grateful I am to have received this award, and I just want to thank everyone in my community and Counselor Sobel for nominating me and Counselor Bauer for coming up to Edmonton and supporting me with it.
Thank you, and congratulations. I've watched carefully over the years all the things you've been involved in, and the town and community really appreciates all your efforts, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And our next --
Your Worship.
Oh, sorry. Deputy Mayor Bauer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to say one final thing, and that is that our Honorable Lieutenant Governor Lois Mitchell also said that Emma giving back is part of your DNA, and you're compassionate, you give back and rally others to join your cause, you make the world better. And I would just like to say to my fellow Counselor, Bob Sobel, you are a hero because heroes nominate others instead of taking the accolades for themselves. And I just want to say that for you to be recognizing young Emma Moore in our community, it took a lot of work, and I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention and for allowing us to express our appreciation to this young lady.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer, and again, thanks to Counselor Sobel for bringing Emma forward, and congratulations, Emma. Our next delegation is a young man this time from the town of Strathmore, and the delegation in the award is an achievement award, and it's called the Duke of Edinburgh -- the Duke of Edinburgh Award. The Duke of Edinburgh International Award is a global program with the goal of challenging, empowering, and recognizing young people between the ages of 14 and 24. From coast to coast to coast since 1963, it has helped motivate young Canadians to set goals and challenge themselves to take control of their lives and futures. The classroom is not the only place to nurture the potential of one of our country's greatest natural resources, our youth. The program reaches young Canadians in communities across the country and provides a platform that helps them chart their individual lives and equip them with important life skills. Today, the Duke of Edinburgh International Award Canada can be found right across the country, engaging over 51,000 young people and over 2,700 award leaders annually. The program is run in cities, rural, and remote areas through government and independent schools, universities, and colleges, and a wide range of organizations such as cadets, scouts, girl guides, indigenous youth groups, new immigrant support programs, sports clubs, employers, youth detention centers, and community youth organizations. The award was founded in 1956 by His Royal Highness, the Prince Philip, Duke of Edinburgh, in London, England. The award which bears his name currently operates in over 143 countries around the world. And this is an award that the young people go through a process to complete certain criteria, and there's a bronze award, a silver, and a gold, and it's our distinction in Strathmore. We've been asked to start the process of having the bronze medals be awarded at the municipal level by the mayor and/or deputy mayor. So, that being said, Strathmore Council has been asked to recognize more Duke of Edinburgh recipients in the future, and now that our local cadet squadron will be promoting this program, we hope to see many more recipients. And I would like to point out that this award can be achieved and may -- achieved by youth who are not just in cadets, so if you're in other areas, you can also achieve this goal. So, at this time, I would like to call forward Jared Eisbrenner to receive the bronze award in the Duke of Edinburgh International Award Program.
And I thought for this one, if we could have Deputy Mayor and myself, since it's supposed to be a mayor's award. So, Jared, would you like to come forward and receive your award in pen, bronze? Come back to me soon.
Turn to write the photo.
Turn over here.
Can I move? Yeah, we'll move.
It's probably okay. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Jared's just gonna say a couple of words to the audience.
Sure. Mayor Field, I heard from a member of our community today that this is the most prestigious youth award in the world.
That's awesome. And Jared, if you -- thank you for that, Counsel Peterson. I think it does show a great deal about the youth who go for these different levels in the award program, and also for Jared, who's one of Strathmore's promising youth. So, do you have a few comments, Jared?
Well, first of all, I'd just like to stress what a privilege it is to be receiving this today from our mayor and here at the council meeting. And I must admit, it was a lot of fun and hard work, and specifically, the community service element of it really gave me more of an appreciation for volunteer work and that side of just life in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared, and once more, on behalf of Town Council in the town of Strathmore, congratulations on achieving the bronze level in the Duke of Edinburgh Award. Oh, yeah, sure. First of all, before we let any of you go, Emma, would you step forward to have a photo taken, and then if we could get both of them with all of council right after that one? So, do you want to do all of council with both?
This is a picture I don't even mind.
Okay, so we'll all do it together.
And I think Emma's brought up her -- you've got your award. We should have asked you.
Does Jared have his award?
He just got it. We need Jared, don't we? Can I have Jared? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Jared, join us.
And then we'll get both.
We'll get both.
Yes. What was that, that I tapped on the segment?
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Thanks.
Can I see your worship?
You know, our youth get a kind of a raw deal at times in the paper and in life in general, but I'll tell you, you look at a night like today where we have two such fine examples of our youth going for awards and doing so much for our community, you know, we're probably in a little bit better shape than we think we are.
Thank you for that, and again, congratulations, Emma and Jared. All right, that brings us to item four, the confirmation of minutes, 4.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for November 14, 2018. Counsel Peterson.
I would still move those minutes of November 14, 2018, Your Worship.
Thank you, and nice catch. You were gonna get a stern look. You've all heard the motion, all in favor, and that motion is carried, and now I'm looking for a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Counselor Corbeil.
I move, we move, go to Committee of the Whole.
Thank you for that. You've all heard the motion, all in favor, and the motion is carried. We're now in Committee of the Whole. And for those people in the audience or watching at home, this is the more informal part of the public meeting. It's mainly an information sharing session where we can have information brought to us, and we can learn about upcoming things that are gonna be brought to future public meetings, and there's a chance for us to ask questions in a little more informal method. So, I don't think we have any unfinished business, and that brings us to items from Administration, 6.1, the wastewater bylaw number 18-10, the draft, and that is Mr. Fisher. Welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship, since those were hard acts to follow, and this is neither entertaining nor dynamic, I shall be brief. The current wastewater bylaw, sanitary sewer bylaw is out of date. The Environmental Protection Enhancement Act was enacted in the early 1990s, and there's a whole pile of regulations pursuant to that. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. There's a whole bunch of regulations pursuant to that act, as well as the Safety Codes Act, that need to be addressed. In the information item, I've listed about 15 points that are relevant to the new wastewater bylaw, including having a purpose which helps to define the what and the why, try to reconcile the definitions from the various pieces of legislation, a reminder that the National Plumbing Code and the Environmental Protection Enhancement Act, as well as the Municipal Government Act prevail, Part 7 addresses allowable sewage disposal systems on private lands as well as public lands. I think as far as possible, we want to keep treatment fields off the pivot fields and other public lands that we have, given the cost of remediation. Part 8 defines the obligations of the owner and the town with respect to wastewater and service connections. The way the legislation is written, the town can take responsibility for improvements on private lands, and the private homeowner can be held responsible for improvements on public lands. This provides a little bit of clarity, so it's not a ping-pong game. Part 9 in item 6 is a further articulation of the assumption of ownership. Basically, what it says is that once we have assumed responsibility for ownership of a wastewater service connection, we will assume ownership -- we'll assume responsibility for the routine maintenance, unless, of course, a parcel's redeveloped or there's some deliberate or malevolent impact on that system. Servicing of lots, parcels, and bareline units has pretty much been a standard condition of subdivision well before my time, that separate services be provided to each lot, and that's been a standard condition of subdivision approval since at least the 1950s, if not earlier. Unfortunately, it sometimes gets lost at the development permit stage, and we've had some controversy around that, I think that some council members may be aware of. And I think that just simply clarifies that it's not just applicable to the subdivision stage, it's applicable also at the development permit stage. Parts 11 and 12 enable the director at his discretion to do a whole bunch of stuff, including specifications for site servicing installations and management of the wastewater system. Part 14 addresses stormwater discharge into the sanitary sewer system. We certainly have situations predating 1995 where that happens, but moving forward, I think we want to keep the stormwater and the sewage system separate and discreet. Part 15 deals with general prohibitions of prohibited materials and concentrations that are listed in the three schedules. They're usually toxic materials. And Part 17 in item 11 authorizes pre-treatment systems, including but not limited to interceptors in car washes, fog interceptors in food establishments, and so on and so forth. Part 18 authorizes and allows the testing and monitoring of wastewater. Part 19 in particular deals with halt wastewater and prevents septicage unless and until our sewage treatment plant is upgraded to deal with the issue, or in the alternative, unless that septicage is treated to a standard that allows our treatment plant to handle it. The last two parts are basically enforcement and penalties, including but not limited to the ability of the director to issue an order under Section 545 of the Act, which is something the current bylaw doesn't do. So, unless there's any questions. I should point out, there's about 24 miscellaneous and minor amendments that I've spotted that are either punctuation, commas, a couple of spelling mistakes, and a few N's and A's in the wrong place. Spelling checker didn't pick up.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Peterson?
I really appreciated that, this document, and when I was reading it, when we had seen it the first time, I had read some others, and one of the things that I saw in some other agreements from larger places was a master indemnification agreement, and I was wondering if that would ever be useful. It seemed that in some of the larger agreements to -- and it's not maybe a concern for today, but down the road, when they specify in their agreements about who can do the installation, which you do here, it just connected well, that whole master indemnification agreement to an indemnification-certified provider, and I was wondering if you wanted -- if you would comment on that.
We can certainly add that.
I don't know if it'd be useful. I thought it might cut down on the length of the loss portion, yeah, the compliance part.
There was, I guess my main source for this was the Environment Minister's document, the City of Calgary document. I tried to stay away from other provinces because of the three pieces of legislation that are, well, certainly the Safety Codes Act, the Environmental Protection Enhancement Act, which are unique to Alberta. As far as the indemnification goes per se, I see that as part of the, you know, the director having the authority to do that. Outside of that, I also looked at Airdrie.
Yeah, I looked at Calgary, Airdrie, Edmonton. So, you know, do you use, like, using a quality indemnified contractor, like, that it's well enough covered here? And I trust you implicitly, I think we have, I think this is a really thorough bylaw.
I think we have, I think we potentially have some issues if the site servicing installation isn't properly installed.
And that's per number seven in your preliminary comments?
Yeah, and that's due to the fact that although it has to comply with the National Plumbing Code, there's nothing in a plumbing permit that inspects that or authorizes it or deals with it. So, I know we've had some issues, so I -- and it's a question of, you know, how much resources do we expend on a few cases, especially when all of those cases have been intended to be isolated to one subdivision under one contractor?
Good point.
If it becomes prevalent, I would certainly say that, yeah.
Okay.
But for now, they're sending us pictures of the installation.
Thank you. My second question is one that you may choose not to answer, and but it became relevant to me as I went through this again and referenced in your comments now, and that is with regards to having to do reclamation. And years ago, before we had a treatment plant, we sprayed extensively on the pivot fields. And so, do you have any indication of, after all these years, what a reclamation in that area would look like?
I don't know.
Do we have any idea?
I don't, but I, there's something directly related to this. One of the reasons that I listed all those regulations in the appendancy is that some of them are completely irrelevant to wastewater and water, but until you actually read the regulation, you're not gonna know. I mean, it's everything from sawmills to, you know, washing tanker trucks and the inside of tanker trucks, and what happens in a truck wash. That's why they're there, and I almost went down the rabbit hole of looking at each one of them, but it seemed more expedient to list them, be aware of it, that there are going to be potential reclamation issues and try to address them in this.
So, then in a follow-up to that, one of my ongoing big concerns around wastewater management that isn't pertinent to an urban setting but has impact on it, and that is the Alberta condition around the expectations for feedlots, where there only has to be one settling pond in Alberta, and I do think, you know, I'd like at some point, and maybe not tonight, but like to hear your esteemed opinion on how that could maybe be dealt with through the Growth Management Board, because it inevitably does have a broader impact on the whole CSMI, you know, what happens to our ponds, our lakes, and so on, and it does impact us through CSMI.
The, I think McLean's Magazine had an article on Feedlot Alley a number of years ago, and the equivalent of 10 million people living in a municipality without conventional sewage treatment. The issue is that it's currently managed by the Natural Resources Conservation Board, and
I didn't know that.
Feedlots are really no longer a municipal responsibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Corbeil.
No, Montgomery's first. He's first, it's okay.
Counselor Sobel.
Nope.
Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Corbeil, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship. Warner, I really want to thank you for this. It was very thorough, and I do, I have a respect for you. My house is much cleaner because I needed to take a few breaks going through it. But no, I really just wanted to thank you for that, so I don't have any questions.
I appreciate that, if I may respond, it certainly challenged my short-term memory after leaving it aside for a few hours or days.
Thank you, Counselor Corbeil. Counsel Montgomery.
Thank you, Worship, and yeah, thank you very much, Warner. This is, it's very thorough indeed. I do have a few questions. One would be, and so these are just kind of, I guess, questions that popped into my head as I was going through this. What would be, what can we expect an owner to do to protect wastewater service connection that is adjacent to the owner's parcel, as per Section 8.5A?
Well, certainly don't uncover it, don't go digging around in the utility right away, and I think the most relevant and most important thing out of that would be if we, we have places in town that have clay tiles. You can go only, you can only go in and root those out so many times before they start to fall apart. You'll often see red dust on the end of the drill bit or the snake. I created this situation in this bylaw where we can ask you to remove the trees and shrubs if we think it either will cause, has caused, or is likely to cause, and then there's an escalating set of circumstances where if we have replaced it and the trees and shrubs are still there and risk further damage, then we can ask that they be removed.
Okay. And does this bylaw pertain to infills or modifications to wastewater service connections in existing areas, or is this more for new areas?
No, it deals with both. So, if you are redeveloping, there might be circumstances where the wastewater service connection is acceptable, but in most cases, you would be asked to replace the wastewater service connection from the sewer main directly to the new building.
Okay.
And that's usually more to do with, you know, whatever the pipe is made out of than anything else. Even plastic pipes, if they crack and trees get into them, there's a progressive deterioration.
Okay. And this is about food trucks. Where in town would a food truck dispose of its wastewater currently?
I think probably at the same place that we, when we except sewage in the Lakes of Mirfield, that would be one option. The other option possibly would be at the plant itself.
Okay.
I'll let the operators figure that one out.
Okay. And so, this is about Section 22.3B2, which has to do with entry into a property?
Ah, yeah.
And so, I'm just wondering, under what circumstances would warrant, like, entering without permission of the property owner, and what would that look like in practice? Like, would it be a peace officer, or who would be doing the entry and?
I think it would depend on the circumstances, but it clearly anticipates an emergency, that, you know, there's significant and immediate danger to people or property, and that's, you know, a kind of universal definition of emergency in most of these bylaws. It's there because it's pretty much common in most of these bylaws, and that's probably the most powerful reason that I can give you. I haven't, I haven't seen any case in my many years where there was actually an immediate urge to do something, but those cases would typically be where there's, more commonly in a multifamily situation where you've got a sewer backup, or in a multi-day commercial building where you've got a sewer backup, and now the sewage is flooding other buildings, so there has to be some immediate response. And it can be complicated, especially if you have something like a bareline condominium where you really don't have much opportunity to get access to. I think it's something that has to be handled with, probably the first move is to call the town's lawyer, and the second move is to decide how to proceed.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a penalty for Section 22.5, which is obstruction of an inspection?
At this time, I have not proposed any penalties. Those would be reflected in the fees and penalties bylaw, but this bylaw is simply bylaw unto itself. That would be an amendment to that bylaw coming forward in the future.
Okay. And the other question I had was on Schedule A, number H, or letter H, just to do with issues with drinking water or affecting drinking water, and I was just wondering, under what circumstances would wastewater affect drinking water?
Well, the, yeah, an excellent question, because I scratched my head over that one a little bit myself. At the end of the day, we get all our water from the City of Calgary, so we're not gonna be contaminating Calgary's drinking water being downstream, but it seems to be there as sort of an all-encompassing closet. If the wastewater, if something is entering our plant that could be affecting potential drinking water downstream, then we have to pay attention to it. And that's not just this bylaw, there's a lot more teeth behind that in the, in our approvals and authorizations to operate the plant, but it's really there more just as a reminder.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions, so thank you very much again.
Thank you, Counsel Montgomery. Counsel Sobel.
Thank you. Nice job on this. Just one question regarding 20.1, and that's a release or allow, releasing or allowing releasing of a substance in the wastewater system. I've kind of tried to find out, like, how to define what a release would be, what a, and the definitions are all there, for example, but I mean, I'm thinking if an Epcor employee is walking by one of the, holding the holding ponds up near the plant and drops a piece of bread from his sandwich into the water, I'm looking and I'm saying that constitutes a I'm looking and I'm saying, that, that constitutes a release?
I don't think so, but I
I, and, and I would really appreciate if you could, are there parameters in this? Are there some, some definitions in regards to?
The release is, is, and I don't particularly like it. I just couldn't come up with anything that was better. Because in, in all cases, I don't use the word. The release is defined as anything that is deposited into the environment or into the wastewater system.
Right.
Speaking kind of conceptually. At the end of the day, what they're trying to deal with in part is, is stormwater and, and, and accidents, spills.
Sure.
Which is not uncommon from industrial properties, especially if flammable liquids. A large volume of gasoline, for example, is deposited in the sanitary sewer. You can have quite a, an interesting event.
So I'm sorry, I'm just going to, because I, on that specific point, and you just mentioned a large quantity of, of gasoline. So that's what I was looking for, is, is some quantification of products?
There's some very specific requirements, and this is where my short-term memory is taxed, exactly which regulation. I'd have to look it up. But it's, it's referenced in here, that you're, you're obligated to come, to report to Alberta Environment. We're all obligated to report to Environment. And if our bylaw doesn't acknowledge that, then how are we supposed to know what we don't know?
It's on dangerous goods.
No, it's, it's actually release reporting. There's a regulation that's referenced in that section. There's guidelines for release reporting and it's, it's a compulsory requirement of the regulation. If it's a minor thing, I can't see us ever getting involved or upset. But if it, if it launches manhole covers into the air at four o'clock in the morning, and that's not a joke, then it's something that we will pay attention to or are compelled to pay attention to.
Certainly. But I, I mean, I'm not missing a section here. The ones we're dealing with is definition sections for those three
Yes.
relevant points and, and of course, 20.1. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for your report. Brings us to item 6.1. Jen has mentioned to us that we, we don't really need to have motions to accept this information. Not even if we rise and report. Thank you. That is good. Item 6.2 Parks Landscape Maintenance Plan Presentation. And welcome.
Thank you. Classification system that I'm about to present to you. It is rough because I didn't want to waste staff time doing an actual map. So this was just me with the mouse writing on the ArcGIS system. So if you have glasses, put them on. Yes. My name is Donna McKellum. I'm the Parks Lead Hand with the Town of Strathmore, Horticulturist as well. We have some items for your consideration this evening, and we look forward to your feedback. We would like to note that depending how this goes this evening, we would like to bring a policy forward on the January 21st meeting for a Parks Landscape Maintenance Plan. So the Town of Strathmore has 165 green spaces. This includes all parks, linear pathways, storm ponds, cut-throughs, and road right-of-ways. The objective of the Parks Landscape Maintenance Plan is to provide services that promote the well-being of our community by having an efficient maintenance schedule and providing a consistent level of service. Until last year, there was no maintenance schedule or plan. It was kind of just fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants. Or just reactionary more than anything, I think. So with the Parks Maintenance Landscape Plan, we would like to do a classification of the parks. This would begin with a Class A and end with a Class E. The classification of each park is determined by a number of factors. If it's a municipal reserve, a municipal school reserve, a public utility lot, or an environmental reserve. What amenities are in the parks, the horticultural features in the park, the number of users anticipated in the park, the size of the park, the type of turf, and if there's irrigation in the park. The classification of each park or green space will determine the maintenance activities in each location. When I use the word park, this includes all green spaces. So when I use park, just keep that in mind. So the first classification is a Class A. It's a highly decorative showpiece park with numerous horticultural and landscape features. These areas will have a full or partial irrigation system, will have a high number of users anticipated, has manicured zones, and relatively intense maintenance activities. Some examples would be Kinsman Park, Second Avenue, Third Avenue, Lambert, Town Hall, the Civic Center, the Arena, and the Youth Center, the Cemetery, and the Hillview Sports Field. These parks would be cut on a weekly basis or as required, and will have a crew designated to maintain many of these areas. Many of these areas require daily litter picks, and the horticultural features require manual pulling of weeds. These areas should also have a turf maintenance program in place. At this time, all of the parks, green spaces, linear parks, cut-throughs, and roads have been treated like a Class A park. As the town grows, it is difficult for parks to maintain the standard and has resulted in inefficiencies in our maintenance activities. Class B. These would be community, community-orientated parks that have full or partial irrigation systems, playgrounds, and picnic areas. Some examples would be John the Boldus Memorial Park, Lawrence Hilton Memorial Park, Wheeler Park, Cambria Park, otherwise known as the S-Bowl or Dino Hill, Strathmore Lakes Estates East Park, otherwise known as Pirate Park, Strathhaven Corner, and the Fire Hall. These will also be mowed on a weekly basis or as required. Many of the Class B parks have less high-maintenance horticultural features and have a slightly lower requirement for weed control, which can be mechanically controlled. This will result in less time spent manually pulling the weeds. A Class C park would be a low-maintenance park that are non-irrigated and contain low-maintenance landscape features. This would include linear parks, entrance features into communities, dry ponds, and low-maintenance green spaces. Some examples are the Hillview Dry Pond, the Strathhaven Dry Pond, Lyons Park, Ranch Linear, Edgefield Gate, and Cambridge Glen Pathway. These parks would be cut every two weeks or as required. They have a low-maintenance horticultural feature and are able to have mechanical weed control as well. A Class D park would be a natural environment park where the primary role is the protection of an undisturbed or relatively undisturbed area of land or water. So this would be Gray's Park, Hillview Storm Pond, the Aspen Storm Pond, Strathmore Lake Storm Pond. One thing I would like to point out with this, though, is with Gray's Park, it would be kind of separated into two classifications because the parking lot entrance would be more of a Class B, just because it has the high horticultural features in it and would require more maintenance. So the past practices have been to cut the storm ponds to the water's edge and to remove trees to provide a view to the residents. This is not a best practice and should not be continued. Storm ponds are meant to hold water, and the plant material around the pond do serve a purpose. Sorry. The plant material, including the grass, is meant to act as a buffer zone, which assists with eliminating erosion during a rain or melting event and buffers the water from pollutants. The slope of the land will determine the buffer zone requirements. Generally, there should be a 1.5-meter buffer zone from the water's edge. Every increase above a 5% slope is an additional 1.5-meter buffer zone. Once a slope is determined, the additional 1.5-meter buffer zone should be added. The green space that surrounds the resident's property will be cut to the pathway. So it's hard to see in this picture, but basically where the fence line is to the pathway would be, would be cut right to the pathway. But once the buffer zone is determined, we would cut the ponds accordingly. So that might be, depending on the slope, might just be a fire cut or two or three passes around the, around the storm pond, basically. And finally, Class E. These would be our roads, thoroughfares, medians, and boulevards. These would include George Freeman Trail, Brent Boulevard, the Highway 1 Service Roads, Wheatland Trail ditches, the North Boundary Road, and Cambridge Glen. These would be cut on a monthly basis. Another inefficiency that we have noted is in the past, the mowers have always picked the garbage on these roadways as they were cutting. Not only is this inefficient, it is also unsafe. We plan to have staff litter pick ahead of the mowers, allowing the mowers to complete the task in a timely manner. So where will we find efficiencies? We will adjust the mowing frequency depending on the classification of the park. Mowing will be closely monitored. If not required, the mowers will not be in the park. One of the main complaints I heard a lot this summer was the mowers cutting dry parks that didn't need to be in there. So we want to closely monitor that, and if they actually have to be cut, they will be cut. We've also implemented an in-house pruning schedule with our first priority being safety. The first thing we're doing is raising the canopies and pruning around street signs to ensure visibility at crosswalks and that all the signage is visible. Our next priority is to raise the tree canopies in the parks and prune out diseases from trees. So by raising the canopies in the parks, this will allow a, sorry, excuse me. This will allow a trimming mower to get closer to the trees, the fence lines, and other obstacles, which will reduce the amount of time spent power trimming. We anticipate that by adjusting the mowing frequency and using the right equipment in the right place, that we can minimize the amount of mowing time and staff required to do this task, which allows us to allocate the staff to the horticultural crews. In the past, as I've mentioned, the mowing has been inefficient. So in the past, there's also only ever been one horticultural crew. And this is where we really do need to designate our staff. So special mention about the irrigation systems. So currently, we have 22 green spaces that have irrigation systems, and 13 of them are not functional. It's critical that we focus our efforts on getting the irrigation systems operational in our Class A and Class B parks. We will also need to be in compliance with the water bylaw, so we will have specific staff and specific schedules dedicated to this task. Basically, the plan is to have two people designated to the watering truck and irrigation. And stormwater. So as part of the maintenance activities in the parks, staff will be required to document activities and conduct inspections of the parks. Part of this inspection process will be to conduct a visual inspection of the storm infrastructure. There is a direct correlation between the parks and storm, and they need to function as a team. Much of this infrastructure has been neglected and requires action. As you see, there's many things that look like this. We also, I've, just in my inspections of the parks, I've seen garbage, wood, things like that, that are blocking some of the storm infrastructures. So this needs to be taken care of and part of our maintenance plan as well. So in conclusion, we want to have a detailed schedule that will include snow removal, mowing, watering, weed control, horticultural activities, litter and garbage collection, pruning and tree replacement program, turf maintenance plan in the Class A and B parks, park inspections, staffing requirements for events, and we want to get all of our park assets into the city work system. Any questions? That's it.
Thank you.
I had 10 minutes, I was told.
Thank you for that presentation. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, and thank you very much, Donna and Craig, and your people for putting this together. And I just want to say, I'm, I'm very, very excited and very happy to see moves like these. I think it's great that we are recognizing that we can, let's say, tier our services. And, and I really, I mean, you said the word efficiencies, and that's one of my favorite words when it comes to government. So, yeah, thank you very much, and I really look forward to seeing this implemented. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Corbille?
Thank you, Worship. I do have a quick question. I don't see that it is listed on here. These also include like the gravel, the one that I'm thinking of, I think it's in, what is it? Is it Cambria? No, not Cambria. No, just the north of Camden Court. You know, the one where there's the, where they park on both sides and stuff?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's on there.
Camara, Camara Court.
Camara Court, that's on there, yes.
So which, what section does that fall into?
So it falls under an E, but with this one, we have in our capital budget to purchase an aquaside machine. So this allows us to have an environmentally friendly way to control weeds, and that's one of the locations I'll be using that thing.
Because I think it was only done once last year. You know, it's their eyesores, but that was my only question. Thank you very much. I'm very excited for this.
Thank you, Counselor Corbille. Counselor Sobel?
Yeah, thanks. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm excited as well, Donna. Thank you and, and everyone who worked on this stuff. So we're looking forward to yeah, this is what, this has been needed for a long time. You know that as well as I do, and, and it's, it's nice to see it. And there's going to be some, I think there's going to be some, some hiccups on, on, on the way. There usually is with any new program. So I, I'm, I'm hoping that you'll be back this, before us come fall and give us a bit of a report card. And hopefully, we don't have to harass you with, with complaints because a big part of this is aesthetics.
The whole point is to eliminate that.
Exactly. That's, I support you 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Craig, for your, your very detailed and in-depth report. I, I really love how you've taken all of Strathmore and just broken it down into small, manageable areas. And I think that this is very timely, that with our population and where we're at, we needed to do this. And I'm so glad that you are on, on board to do that. It's exciting. I'm also, there were a few key things that you said that really stuck out for me. And I like that you're going to be keeping the storm ponds with that natural barrier around it. I think that not only does it, it looks nicer, but it keeps everything safer. And it, it leaves it to that more natural-looking way that it should be. And then that you're going to be doing the litter pick ahead of the mowing. Because sometimes, and it doesn't happen all the time, but sometimes there's a garbage bag or something in there, and the mower goes over it and it just goes into 100 billion pieces. And then, you know, people come by and walk. But with that litter pick, I've really noticed too, that there are so many more Strathmore residents that are doing more plugging and that are going around and helping. So I would like to, you know, urge people in our community to help the parks people and, and continue to go out there and pick up garbage in your neighborhood. Because not only is it helping our storm ponds and our, our environment, but it, it's helping our parks crew and, and saving time and, and helping you with inefficiencies. So I'm just raising a glass to everybody in, in Strathmore. And I'm so thankful that you will have additional crews for your horticultural group.
Yes, me too.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Peterson?
So many thanks. Very appreciative. In the, in the initial part of your presentation, where you, prior to starting, where you asked for, for some input, one of the things that I've noted in the past is that sometimes types of horticulture matter. And, and I know that you said that in your categories, that that would be a concern, horticulture generally, but, but maybe having to break that out a little bit more in, in terms of the types of horticulture. Following that, I received a communication from, actually a citizen from Wheatland County who was extraordinarily impressed with the document you provided, the book that you provided created relevant to the planting of trees and shrubs appropriate to the area. And she made a request that, yeah.
It was everybody.
Yeah, it was your whole department, your whole department. And, and there was, there is now a tremendous interest, and they've asked if you would be willing to work with Communities in Bloom and do presentations to community, in, in open events in the community of the future.
That's actually something that the Communities in Bloom Committee has already been discussing.
They've already asked you. I, I wanted to make sure.
Even us as a group doing it altogether, yeah.
So congratulations to you, and I'm very appreciative. And, and the other thing, following up to Counselor Bauer, I've also been asked that as our member to, representative to Strathmore Library, that the library, lending library here has many, many things. They've actually, community is actually asking for plugging sticks to be able to sign out plugging sticks from the library. And you can sign out skis and other things, drills, anyway. My final, my final issue, whenever I hear things like water truck and irrigation, it doesn't really coordinate with the word efficiency. And, and I'm very fearful of the cost of that coming back. And I'm assuming that we'll hear about that. There'll be a cost out of that coming forward at some point?
So this is one of the things that I think we're going to need to discuss with council because I do agree, water truck is not the most efficient way to be watering. And also, most of your irrigation systems are manually, well, not only are they defunct, but the ones that are operational are manually turned on. So the way you get around and, and also have more efficiencies is by having a central irrigation irrigation system. So it will basically, if it rains.
Do you hear that, Mayor?
It won't water.
Hear that, Mayor Field?
Yeah, it won't water. If it's, if we have a summer, spring, summer, that's have, have any rainfalls, that irrigation system will not.
So it may have to be a staged process.
Yes, exactly. And that's what we are working on.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Cox.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I'm going a little bit into your efficiencies and just going to ask, because I'm not sure, but I know that 4H does highway cleanup. Can they do any of our other roads?
Absolutely. So this is another thing that we would like to look into, is not only 4H, but any other community groups that are looking to do volunteer work that we would like to.
Can they do garbage?
Yep. Collect garbage or if there's other things that we can, and use them for, absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cox, and thank you for your presentation. I just have two questions. How often would we, or how often would your department reevaluate different categories of areas? Like how, how often would you relook at things?
So basically, once we make the first categorization, it would stay like that unless council finds something they don't like. I think for the most part, we're going to base ours on whatever development comes through and what the classification of the park is and the amenities in the park. So it'll always fall in line with that when I, when we make the classification.
Thank you. And the reason I ask is you, you folks have improved the Strathmore Lakes Park Greenery so much that you're, you're actually getting a lot of people using it far more than they used to. They're walking, they're walking the lake. We've got, we've got a group of older gentlemen who have remote control sailboats on that storm pond. So you may actually be creating a situation where you're driving up the usage and it may have to be reevaluated there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Congratulations on that.
I would just like to mention, that's another one that would have a double classification because it would be a B and a D, but that's, we would treat it more as the B, just from the users in the park, because I have seen an increase as well.
Thank you. And the other question I had was concerning irrigation, the number, the number of parks that have irrigation systems down. Can we expect that in the fall budget 2020 season, you'll be bringing some, some requests to fix and repair irrigation systems?
I, in the fall, I think you will see that. I'm almost positive you will see that and I would see it being a staged irrigation improvement program.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item six point three, development update. Justin. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Just point of order, Your Worship, just maybe a comment, none of our, anybody's video is working?
Yeah, our screens are not working. I don't know if they're going to be more visual presentations.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. We'll take a quick two-minute recess just to see if we can get the screens up and working. Thank you.
Just to give an update on the great work being done in our department and also to highlight some of the work that's been done with our staff who are in the back corner, wave out. Mr. Chuck Proctor is away today, but he would have loved to have been here. I would love to. That's my next slide. So, yes, you're looking at my presentation. So the team, I'd like to introduce Audrey, back, Mita, Harry, Kathy, Chuck, who's probably sleeping, and, and also Cameron. And I just also wanted to give a special mention to three people who really support us incredibly, Werner, Ty, and also Carla. Werner's been a great mentor to me and our team, lots of expertise and really done a great job with all the work with the cannabis policies. And Ty and Carla have done some cannabis policies, land use. And Ty and Carla have done some fantastic work with the website and also brochures and social media. So we'd really like to thank all of them. So 2018, I've only been here since August, as you know, but it's amazing the amount of work that we do. All the way from area structure plans, which are very, very high level, all the way down to sort of business licenses, tracking development stats and everything in between. One really exciting thing that we've, we've implemented is the construction fire safety plans. So like to thank Trent for that, who worked very closely in order, so now part of these building permit, we're requiring evacuation and fire safety plans to increase the amount of safety. Just, just as you know, we do have our volunteer fire department, so we want to make sure that the town is as safe as possible. So there are numerous different projects and different permits and also licenses that we do. So that's just a kind of an overall view of our work. So I just wanted to take, take a few minutes just to kind of highlight some of the great work done by our staff. So we'll start with Audrey and also Mita, who are in the back. They are literally the face of us. You know, we have an incredible visible counter, as you know, for the public when they come in. I've been to many different town and cities and, you know, I think we have one of the most open counters, you know, so people can come in, ask questions. Some people are nice, some are not. And Audrey and Mita do a great job of being very patient, explaining to people, walking them through their applications and all the questions that they have. So they really make our life a lot easier and they are the first sort of, first milestone or the first step a lot of the public have when they come to see us. So, you know, they do a lot of work in terms of receiving applications, preparing files, compliance letters, issuing gas and plumbing permits. They do a great job recording all these on spreadsheets and in M files. The, are, they get a lot of calls from citizens and realtors looking for real property reports and, you know, so they pull those and do a lot of work with the engineering department in order to try and coordinate the instructions for these residential service and inspection. So they really are the front end of our work and really help to coordinate a lot. Audrey specifically, she's been at the town for four and a half years now and just some of the key achievements that, that she's done this year. She's really put together a very detailed real property report spreadsheet that really goes through when everything is updated and to making sure that anything that's not updated is removed. She's worked with the engineering department, as I said, to update the service checklist and she is the, so she monitors the Alberta ONE call and all the projects for the town that can come in in terms of any requests. Mita's been with the town for a year and a half. She had a lot of work, I believe, this winter in terms of receiving a lot of calls from citizens about snow and garbage and odor, which gave her a lot of headache, but she worked through those really well. And she does a lot of work with EP Core and Waste Management. And she's actually completed the Applied Land Use Planning Course, so she's really done some work in, to improve her knowledge on, just on the weekends and on evenings. She's taken a lot of time out of her day to just, yeah, improve her knowledge and bring extra skills to the town. Harry is our Safety Codes Officer, you know him well, he's been here eleven years. He told me, he told me eleven.
This feels like.
Yeah, feels like twenty. So as I said, he's done a wide range of projects. I don't want to read every one of them, but the school, the fieldhouse and the, he does a lot of residential permits and just some of the great work he's done. He's worked with the Safety Codes Council to really put together a new called Imagine Plan and has worked with, with myself and also Trent on a new RFP document for the Safety Codes Service and he's on the town's safety committee. So we'd really like to thank Harry. There are some days where he has a lot of inspections and, you know, there's very different levels of expertise and work and knowledge for the people that are building in this town. Some are very straightforward, some are not. And so he has to spend a lot of time explaining to people and really putting very technical, technical information in layman's terms. So he does a great job and a lot of patience working with a lot of applicants. So we'd like to thank Harry for all of his work. Kathy's our Development Officer, she's been here eight and a half years and she told me that she's basically has approved every single family house in the town. So if you like them, Harry, she's great. If you don't like them, that's the person you've got to talk to. But she does a great work on all the applications. She's taken over more commercial and industrial permits and she does all the business license tracking for the town. So all the updates you get through James. She does a great job of tracking all the business licenses and all the development stats. And she is our ICS main lead. She recently completed her three hundred, so I feel safe when I'm around her at all times, but, so, yeah, so she's taken on a lot of new work, as I said, a lot more complex projects and a lot more complex applications and I think she's really enjoying it. I just wanted to, she wanted to highlight, I asked them to highlight a project that they were really proud of this year. This is a project of a new UFA or there's a, there has been amendment to their, their existing site. That's what it looks like right now. Kathy worked really hard with the applicant to really increase the amount of landscaping on the site. So as you can see, it's very bare, no man's land. So when the DP was approved, she really pushed hard to get some better landscaping, a more defined drive aisle and to really define the edge of the site. So that was something she was really proud of. Chuck, as you, you know him well, I don't think that's him there, but maybe that's him in sixty years. But he's been at the town for four years. He's done a lot of multifamily projects this year. He, I believe, approved the first cannabis application, so he was quite proud of that. Worked with Trent, as I said, on the fire safety plan. He's very excited about the Marigold WID site and seeing that come to fruition. And again, he's very passionate, as you know, about bees and I'm sure he'll be bringing more samples as they go forward. So his projects that he wanted to highlight were his work, working on the design for some of the enhancements for Kinsman Park. He was excited to be part of that project. He takes a lot of pride on the beautification that's happened downtown. So these are really great tangible improvements that you can see that he's been involved in and the banners that have gone forward. So this is sort of his legacy right now in the town, which is great. Cameron's only been with us about a month and a bit, but he's brought some great experience to us and he's very involved and very passionate and he's really come at it from a lot of different levels. So we've got him working on area structure plans, permits, landscaping. His big success to date is he's now our representative on the downtown group and he, he put together a fantastic draft policy for downtown murals, which I think can be also replicated townwide. So we're going to be working through that, but it was a great start of a policy, which I think we can see really move forward. And he's really worked hard the last week or so to update a lot of stuff on the website, which I'll be also talking about in, in terms of just updating and the development application requirements to get to a more consistent expectation of applicants. So his site that he's working on is a new cannabis store downtown. This was the initial application that came forward. The next one just shows just some of the work that he pushed the applicant on. So new paint of, just on the exterior, as well as some new planters on the front again to improve the landscaping and the aesthetics of the site. So again, you know, we've, we've been really challenging our staff to be strong and to push back on, on the applicants in order to raise the standards of the applications that kind of come in and it's been very successful so far. We've been getting some really good feedback from the applicants and they've been, most of the time, happy to respond to our requirements. So I just wanted to take some time just to go through some of the website updates we've done. This is really, the aim is to increase the information and education for new applicants and also businesses who are coming to the town, just in terms of what are the expectations from a land use development permit, business, sorry, building permit and also business licenses. We've updated in terms of the application requirements and in terms of having clearer descriptions of the different types of uses and when they're permitted and discretionary. We had a little, I would say, confusing checklists in terms of change of uses, whether they were new, in existing buildings to new construction to different, so we've really tried to streamline and be more clear as to what type of applications are based upon what a proposal. The public amenity statement is an exciting one. When applicants come in, they have to identify what are the public uses, I guess, that are in and around their site. So in terms of public trees, sidewalks, benches, things like that. So we want them to protect it, acknowledge it and, you know, where the town needs to protect its assets and investment. And if any of those are being removed, then there's obviously a plan to work on some sort of compensation. I spoke about the fire and safety plan, so I won't go through that again, but that's, has been added. And what we've done, as well as has, we've put in some improved examples in terms of the site plans and the landscaping plans and the elevation drawings that we expect as part of applications. There's been a lot of going back and forth and it's great to set a standard right up front in the checklist is to say, these are the expectations when you come in with your application. So that reduces time and increases certainty to the applicants. And timelines are something that we've really worked on to be very clear on, to set that expectation. So when an application comes in, someone's not calling two days after saying, why haven't you given us our permit? So I'm going to show you that just on the website and as well as we've really wanted to increase the level of transparency for applications for the public. So they can go online and see what applications are in their specific area, whether it's their downtown or their own individual communities. They can look at what the applications are, what the stage of that is, who the planner is and who they can contact. So hopefully this works. No surprise.
Don't you worry.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
All right, we'll show up on your screen, just on the big one.
Oh, okay. Where's the mouse there? Okay. So this is our website here, Building and Development. So I'm just first just going to go to this, the development application permit and checklist. So we're hoping that people go to this page first and here just gives a very clear understanding in terms of what is expected when someone comes in, you know? So what we're saying is, first of all, book a meeting with the town. We're open all the time, what we call a pre-application meeting. open all the time, what we call a pre-application meeting. There are some towns and cities that actually charge for this, you know. We're saying it's free, it's open, our doors are always open. Come and chat with us about your proposal. We bring in a member of the Operations Department, we bring in Engineering, we bring in Harry. So they have a comprehensive review of their application from all the meaningful departments. Does your site have the appropriate land use? If so, then you need a development permit and then a building permit. And, you know, we've been very clear to say that all, all Alberta building code requirements need to be met, that there's a, there's a process involved from start to finish. It's not just getting a DP, or it's not just getting a building permit. And, you know, we've really made it clear to contact the Town Safety Code Officer in terms of if there's any uncertainties of that. So just in terms of timelines, I just wanted to highlight this because I'm quite excited about this chart here. So when someone clicks on a land use amendment timeline, they're just given an idea of what the process is, each step, you know. So again, we're encouraging them to do a pre-application meeting. We then send them a detailed team response in terms of what was the proposal. So that takes one to two weeks. When the application actually comes in, it's then reviewed, and then we go to council with the first and two readings. So I don't want to go through each step, but I just wanted to show that we're really trying to make it very clear to the public and applicants what each step is and what the timelines are, you know. So for typically land use amendments, we're looking at about twelve to fourteen weeks, depending on the, the complexity of the application. I believe we may be looking at potentially combining first, second, and third readings at the same council meeting to help with that timelines, but that's just one of the flowcharts we have. And the development permit one is very similar, but again, it just, these are really the most ones we get. I would say ninety percent, whoops, sorry, ninety percent or more are development permits. So again, very similar chart, but just shows the applicant step by step what the internal processes are and external processes to be able to give a better idea of the timelines. And finally, I just wanted to just show the, the active development permit tracking, which I spoke about. So this page gives the public a very clear idea of the type of applications that are coming in, where they are. So as you can see, we have four downtown, Glenwood, Highway One Corridor, Hillview. So again, I mean, my experience is that really people are mostly concerned about what's going on in their area. So this is an easy way for them to sort and find where, where the applications are. And again, we've got a link back to the timelines again and the definitions. It's quite interactive again. So, you know, once, if you're in Hillview and you're saying, oh, there's a new massage therapy going, and I wonder how close that, that is to my house. I'd love to go and get a massage and just walk to it, you know. So you click on Google Maps, and it takes you to the address there. So you know exactly where the application is. I just, whoops. Sorry. Okay, if it's not coming up, it's no problem. I just wanted to, oh, I just want to put that back there. Where do I go? Thank you. Okay. Oh, no problem. So just going back to the great work that Ty and Carla have been doing for us, what we're, what we've also really improved is our social media presence. So we've been putting Facebook, tweets, posts, and as well tweets, tweets on Twitter, just asking people questions and just making them aware of permits that may be needed, that you need one for a hot tub. Mr. Someone, Brock Williams, is it? Did not think much of that post, but, you know, our aim is to increase education and awareness of what is required. You know, we had a post up about what, what is a permit and links to that site, so that people can read about it. We have links about thinking of opening up a business and ensuring about the permit. So we are trying to be more active social, in social media and to be able to draw people to our information booklet and site. So we look forward to next year. So if you did have any questions, let us know.
Thank you for your presentation. Questions or comments, Counselor Sobel?
Thanks. I'm a little overwhelmed. This is, this is amazing. You guys have really been busy. So this is, I guess, in a form of a, a question or a, an inquiry as to whether or not this, you have something in mind for this. But one of the crucial parts, I mean, they're all crucial, all your staff are crucial in, in a successful application, but, and I want Harry's head to get any bigger, but his position really is crucial, especially in regards to development and, and, and construction. And, and we all know that Harry works very hard and he needs vacations. So in that period of time, oh, he doesn't get any, well, then, then my question's over. But when, when he is gone a couple of weeks, and that is delaying, his, his absence causes a delay in, in, in further construction and, and actually slows down perhaps an opening, store opening by two, three weeks, whatever it is. Was it, has there ever been any contemplation or consideration of, of sharing that duty with, with another municipality? And I don't even need an answer right now, but, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if there was any way we could, we could share that. And, and, and again, vice versa. I'm wondering, I'm wondering if, if, for instance, Chestamere is running into the same problem. So I'll just throw that out there. I don't know if it's ever been, been considered.
Through the chair, so we do have a contract with Superior Company. I don't know what their last names are, but basically they are quote unquote, Harry's replacement. You know, there is a new request for proposal going out to hire a new company. We are looking at that through the new QMP. We want to make sure that the new company comes in, or if they are the successful bidder, that they are more in line with what we are looking for. I think there's certainly improvements that can be made through the inspection process. In terms of timing, you know, I'd really like to make sure that, you know, there's some sort of time commitment from them to say, you know, if he's sick, Harry, or if he's got a family emergency, he's gone for a week, and it's, you know, can they respond within forty-eight hours? Because absolutely, we want to make sure that inspections still happen in a, in a timely manner. So part of the RFP and the successful bidder who will be looking at, we want to make sure that they are able to cover that time in, in a good manner. So, but that's a good point. But we can certainly look at what other municipalities are doing also in order to combat that.
Thank you, Justin. That's a great report. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Sobel. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to say a thank you to you and, and to all the people in Development Services. I have seen firsthand the change, the changes that have been happening over the last few years, and, and the professionalism and the, and the quality and objectivity as well that the department's been displaying has been commendable. And, and I'm, actually, I'm really excited to see some of the changes that you showed us, including like the permit tracking. I think that's great. And so I just wanted to say thank you very much, and thank you to your crew.
Thank you, Counselor Montgomery. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, Worship. I just have a couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, you are surrounded, Justin, by a really talented group of people.
Yeah, absolutely.
With a vast array of skills and expertise. And I'm so glad that you were able to come to us today and, and just share a little bit about that. I appreciate them because it allows me, as a counselor, to be able to come and ask the experts. When I'm preparing for, for council and, and I have questions, they're always there and ready to help me out. So thank you. Also, I just want to really stress that when people want to start a business in Strathmore, that they take the opportunity and book an appointment with Development Services. In the short time that I've been on council, I've heard lots of feedback from businesses that are, that have opened or, or have, have not opened, based on what happened in the development process. And a lot of times, things can be mitigated and completely avoided in terms of delays if you just come and, come and talk to them first. And so I would almost like to see on that website, I don't know, bigger font or, or something to really draw people and let them know how important that initial interaction is with your people. Because even before you've chosen a space, you don't know if the land use allows you to have a restaurant in that space, or if it's, if it's been a, you know, a business for a long time, whether or not it has the proper hookups and whatnot. And all of this can be mitigated before you, you start building. So I just want to thank you for this presentation today, and also for changing the Little Town logo. I noticed you changed it, where quality is a way of life.
Thank you to Carla.
So thank you for that. And that's everything.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Thank you again, Justin, for your presentation. I'd like to echo the other counselors. Much appreciated the hard work and teamwork attitude of your staff and, and the professionalism that Counselor Montgomery pointed out. It's, it's gone a long way. I really like seeing the, the flowchart of the steps that they go through in the timeline for it. That's, that's really good, too. So much appreciated.
Your worship?
Counselor Peterson?
It's just worth noting that recently, our, our mayor, who's very gracious and sharing lots with council, received huge compliments from, from one of our biggest developers just recently regarding your department. And I'm pretty sure it's because you have someone from Oian. But anyway, it's, it's a great department.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin.
Sorry, where's Oian?
You don't know him. It's right near Saskatchewan, right near the border.
Sorry.
It's okay. That brings us to item six point four, which I believe we're, we're dealing with the cemetery later at another time.
Yes, Your Worship. We just wanted to report to council that administration has met with the owners of the Wheatland Funeral Home. We just met with them yesterday, and we learned and listened, and, and we would like some time to process what we had learned. So we're asking council to postpone this matter until the February committee of the whole place.
Thank you for that, Jen. And that brings us to item six point five, Strathmore, Counselor Sobel?
Go ahead.
Counselor Peterson?
So, so my question is, just to, just to make sure, we suspended the, the existing and everything is as it was before? So that hasn't changed?
No, Your Worship. We'll continue with the fees as they were prior to.
Thank you.
Last pulse.
Good point. Thank you. That brings us to the Strathmore Motor Products Sports Center turf options. Welcome, Tracy and Mark.
Thank you. Coming in nicely. A little early in the game, but.
So thank you for letting us come back tonight to talk about the sports center and some of our options for our playing services. Just like to apologize for the late report. Getting information out of our contractors was a little more difficult. And so we know you just got it today, and so we will be patient if you have to take some time to read or to go for your questions. So Mark's gonna kind of take us through it.
Yeah. Thank you, Tracy. So first of all, the report is entitled Turf Options, and so I'm proud to say that we met last week with representatives from Strathmore Soccer and Strathmore Lacrosse. And we have a consent, reached a consensus on the type of turf. The turf is very similar, actually, it's almost identical to a product that's currently being used within the city of Calgary Soccer, Soccer Facilities, as well as the city of Edmonton. Very low maintenance in terms of that, and it presents us with lots of options and lots of versatility, should we decide to remove it or lay it back down. It's attached with a Velcro type of format, so it doesn't, there's no issues with it being placed on the concrete or, or pulled back up at any time. So obviously, there is, are some delays in terms of that product being, being ready for us. We're looking at about six to eight weeks. But the, the next step for us is that we've been in contact with Chestamere Soccer, who have a very similar style turf. Exactly. Sorry about that. We've been in contact with Chestamere Soccer. They have a very similar turf that they have sitting in storage. And we're, we feel very comfortable that we can acquire this turf on a, on a renting basis. That will make the facility usable for our, for our, our user groups and our members of the community from January to April. Now, onto our report here. Realizing that you've just kind of got it within the last couple of hours or so, the next step in terms of this, this sports center enhancements is, would be the boards for lacrosse primarily. The last couple of weeks, or I should say, about the last couple of months, we've done some significant research into a number of facilities, both within the municipalities throughout Alberta, and talked about similar sort of styles of, of, of facilities that can house both soccer and lacrosse. The majority of these, of these municipal facilities do not remove their boards. The conversations that we've had with sport contractors, suppliers, have, have indicated that while removable boards are an option, it's very labor intensive. My, my contacts within the University of Calgary, at the Calgary Oval, estimate their, their costs approximately $3,000 for every installation, and then, I guess, reinstall and, and removal of the boards. That consists of about a crew of six stage people, about a twelve hours, two or, two or three, one or two forklifts. And then there's obviously some, a lot of wear and tear on the, on the equipment, on the boards and, and the infrastructure as well. So saying that, obviously, anything is possible, anything is feasible, but those are some of the things that we have to be aware of. Now, because of the uniqueness of that, of removing the boards, Strathmore would be a first of its kind facility within the province of Alberta. Majority of the, of the facilities that we, that I spoke with either have a fieldhouse that's dedicated as a fieldhouse with either artificial turf or, or a sport court or sport flooring, or they have a dedicated playing area that would be classified as lacrosse or indoor soccer. So one of our recommendation, or our recommendation is, or for a potential operating model, would be that we would install the, install the, the boards for lacrosse for their competitive season from May to June, or sorry, May to July, and then remove the boards come September through April for indoor soccer. That would allow us to have ultimate versatility in terms of the facility, in terms of accessing it for other user groups such as football or baseball. They wouldn't have to modify their practices or their usage of the facility if boards were, if boards were in there. Obviously, that does incur, obviously, the $6,000 or $3,000 for the installation and removal, and then as well as two, one or two days for downtime.
Yeah. So as Mark said, this is a really unique model. It's not really been done in municipalities in Alberta. And so there are some unknowns. And while we think it's a really innovative idea to try and meet all the needs of our users, there are some things that we're, we're still unsure of, because there's not a, a model we can, we can follow. So one of the risks is those unknowns. There may be potential costs as we install and operate over the first couple of years that, that are unforeseen to us, that we may be, may have to discuss with council. And one of the ones we actually just thought of while we were sitting here, listening to all the amazing things our, our coworkers do, is netting. As you know, anyone who's been in a sport facility, you have to have netting to keep balls in play. And so the netting that would connect to the boards for lacrosse wouldn't be the same netting we would need that goes all the way down to the floor for soccer. And so we may have to invest into netting systems. So because there's some logistics to work out, we, we may, we may have to come up with some, some additional costs or additional spends in the facility. But we're really excited that the idea could, could meet the needs of all of our users. It does create a few operational challenges, but we're more than willing to, to, to make those work to better our community. One of the things we would, we would commit to doing is, is really evaluate our operational costs and, and challenges over the first kind of twelve changes, um, to the operating model. And so we're here today to talk, um, with council and I know it's not customary, but we are requesting for council to rise and report this evening to, to make a decision so we could move forward with, um, purchasing of supplies, um, so we can aim for an April installation.
Thank you for your presentation Tracy and Mark. Uh, I pre- I really appreciate the fact that you're, you're trying to make things work for both of the major user groups. I think, uh, lacrosse really wants to try to grow it, grow itself as a, as a sporting group in town and I like the fact that you've gotten the groups together and tried to come up with some, some good ways to make everything work for them. Um, just a quick question about the netting. Uh, the netting, are we also looking at netting to protect, I don't want to call them the walkers, but, because that's a show, that's a walking bad reference in case you didn't get it. But yeah, do we have nettings for the, uh, for the, for the actual walking track too?
So the netting won't, um, won't go around the walking track, but it would go around the playing surface.
Okay.
Would, which would be a barrier between the track and the playing surface.
Okay.
So the, the, and they would go up high and so the likelihood of a ball getting onto the track would be very low.
Okay.
Would take a really talented person to figure that one out.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have no idea who's first, but I'll try councillor, or Deputy Mayor Bauer.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you Tracy and thank you very much, Mark, for this, uh, presentation. I, um, appreciate that this is a sports centre turf options, but I would like to know please, um, just with regards to the field house part, we've talked about in the past that it could also be used for a trade show. How does the turf options and the boards impact whether or not we can use it for trade show events?
Um, so the turf itself would be, like I said, it'd be very low maintenance because it's almost very similar to a carpet, um, which is what lacrosse requires. The only need that would have would be a protective cover. Um, it's similar to what's used, you, what could be utilized in gymnasiums to protect the hardwood and it's really just to, for, prevent spills or anything like that. There's no hard, uh, cover needed. You can pretty much just drive right over top of it. Um, how would that, it would impact with the boards is that the boards would be removable in the one section or would be removed, um, at the, um, overhead doors that would allow traffic to go in and out of it and to make egress, um, possible for those participants or for anybody within, inside the arena. It's no, no different than what we have within the, um, within the family centre, um, come, um, rodeo, stampede, whatever.
Yeah, um, so the other, the other thing too is depending on the trade show, um, like let's say it was an RV show where we knew there'd be heavy, long-term weight on it, we could always remove the turf because it's not going to be glued to the floor, it's going to be Velcroed and so then our only, only issue is storage and but for a short period of time, that's something we could, um, we could accommodate for a one-off user.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Bauer. Um, brings me to councillor Montgomery and then councillor Cox.
Thank you. Uh, so I just want to say, uh, like good job, uh, thinking outside the box and trying to come up with a, a novel idea. Um, so I guess like, like if we're going to have removable boards, we will have to build something to store them in then?
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Part of the ask would be, um, for money to build an additional storage facility. He's the one we've built was not planning on storing a board system, which will take up significant amount of space. So an additional storage unit will be required.
Okay.
And that's in the ask of about thirty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Montgomery. Councillor Cox.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a couple of questions. Um, at one of our past meetings, you talked about Strathmore Soccer having turf. Did that not pan out?
It was actually Chestmere Soccer turf.
Oh, okay.
We just heard about it through soccer.
Okay.
So that was our error.
Okay, so we are.
Same thing.
Okay. Okay. And then my second question is, you talk about this, the turf that we are going to be implementing as a lacrosse turf, is it the same as the Chestmere turf? So, because I thought that lacrosse told us they couldn't play on the same turf as soccer.
So there's a variety of turf options, um, a longer turf or a, uh, versus a much shorter carpet. Um, both lacrosse and soccer have seen the, the recent sample, um, which is the same sort of turf that is, that Chestmere would be using. It's almost like a carpet, um, and so it'd be no issue, um, for lacrosse to be able to utilize that. What it changes for soccer or any traditional field sports is instead of wearing a long pleated type of shoe, you just wear an indoor basketball shoe or running shoe, um, so.
So it won't be the, the longer turf?
Not that, yeah.
It won't look or feel like grass, it will feel like.
Carpet.
Carpet. Or turf. Which, um, both associations have.
No issue with.
Have no issue with.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cox. Councillor Corbille.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a couple of questions. We are only renting the turf for four months.
Yeah, so the, the rental of the turf will be to bridge the gap between our ordering of our turf and the installation. Um, we don't, we're not recommending using the used turf on a long-term basis. It is, um, a handful of years old, um, and it's not going to last a long time and so it gives us the opportunity to open the facility in January, um, but it won't be a long-term solution.
Ultimately, a purchase of a new turf also comes with a warranty, um, the rental of the turf, um, we, as Tracy said, it's, it's a couple of years old, it's been in the storage, um, in a trailer, um, in, just outside of Chestmere. Um, ultimately, we feel that, that, you know, it's worth the investment for us to get a reputable new turf, uh, for, for our community.
I, I have a, a couple of issues with that because if, if it's working and it's good, I don't see why we would buy new stuff for our warranty to run out sooner. You know, if it would last two years or a year even, you know, we'd have warranty for that extra, you know, eight months. I, I don't know, that's, that's just my opinion, but, um.
So councillor Corbille, that's definitely something we can look at if council wants to use the used turf for a longer period of time and, and kind of bridge that gap a little bit longer. It does come with some risks. Uh, if we unroll the turf and we find issues or it doesn't last as long, we do have that four-month lead time that we may cause interruptions into usage and so that's one of the things we're worried about is, um, is that, is that gap. It's, you, you can't get turf quickly.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a long process.
I understand, but I wouldn't mind actually wait until we look at it, unfold it and then see, you know, how, I guess, I shouldn't say how used, but realistically how used it is. If it looks great, because I believe it has only been used for two years.
Yes, one or two seasons is our understanding, so.
And it was taken in and out and then it's been used a handful of times along the storage for some special events.
Hmm. Like I say, I just, I wouldn't mind, like I said, if, if I just hate throwing away something that's good.
So we have, we're not proposing that we purchase the turf, we're proposing that we rent it.
Oh, that's what I mean. I'm, okay. Oh, okay.
So then, um, Chestmere Football, or.
Soccer.
They got me calling it football.
That's the right word.
Not incorrect.
Yeah, we're not going to talk about that. Uh, but, um, they weren't super interested in, in selling it, while they're open to that, they, they expressed an interest in keeping it as the hopes that one day they'll have a facility to put it in.
Oh, okay.
So we are definitely talking rental.
Okay.
Um, that was the impression.
Yes.
That we got. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then I see, I like that we're trying to accommodate everybody. I really, I see the cost that is caught, that what it would cost for boards and to take in and out and to store and everything else, but the cost has, I think, been a part of this since, you know, when they were planning and, and they've, I, I still am in favor of doing the boards myself. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Corbille. Uh, Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Montgomery.
That's Mr. Montgomery.
Mister, um.
His light's on too.
Thackeray, did you want to weigh in on something from councillor Corbille though?
Um, not directly, no.
Okay.
But I do have something that.
Okay, I'll go to councillor Montgomery then.
Uh, how much are we paying to rent that turf?
We haven't negotiated that yet.
Oh, okay. A surprisingly low amount, I presume?
Hopefully. Um, it's going to work out to be the equivalent of their rental rates to use the facility, if that makes sense.
And I, I just had a quick question before I go to deputy mayor Bauer. Um, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to go to financial stabilization, but it, it's important too that we not have that facility sit empty, we need to get it running.
Sorry, that was an adjustment we'd like to make.
Oh, okay. Mister Thackeray.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, first of all, I want to thank Mark and Tracy for, uh, being creative and taking a risk. I hope council is okay with our risk because we're, we're doing something nobody else has done and that's always a big scary thing in our business, uh, but I think it's really commendable and thank you for, for doing that and thank you for thinking of some creative ideas. Um, another thing we just spoke about before the meeting is we would like to know if council was amenable to, um, using our, uh, existing, um, bylaw that we have, that we already have on the books for the, the venture and use that to support rather than using financial stabilization. I think it would be a good move right now, given our, our whole financial picture, um, and the bylaws are already in place, um, and I think it would be, I think it would, we, it would just expand the scope and it, and it really aligns very nicely with the original intent of that, uh, de-venture, which was for Parks and Recreation and all the 150 projects we did last year. And so I think it would be a, a good, uh, good alignment with that. Uh, so if you're, again, we're not looking for a decision tonight, but we would.
What's available?
Three million.
Total.
Yep.
My question when I mentioned the financial stabilization fund too is, will we then also have to go back in the four months to look at, uh, getting more funding to, to purchase the soccer turf?
Uh, the turf has already been approved as part of the project.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify on that, then that's good. Uh, councillor, well deputy mayor Bauer and then councillor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is just, you know, because these costs are continually going up and, and now with the takedown and, and everything, we're going to definitely incur, um, more costs as a result in the long run. Have either soccer or lacrosse, either association, uh, met with you at this point and said that they would enter into an agreement to help pay for some of these investments?
Yeah, so we've talked about it with, with both associations, um, more so with lacrosse and, and they're committed to a multi-year financial commitment. We haven't hashed out what the exact numbers and timeframes will be, kind of depended on what we put in the facility. Obviously, um, if they can't use the facility, they're less likely to make that commitment. Um, but I believe both associations are open to that. They are both here, if you, if you would like to pose that question directly, um, but I feel confident that they would both be open to that.
Am I able to talk to them directly?
With the discretion of the chair.
Um, I, I suppose if, if, are you, you, it's hard to explain because you have them here and yet you've explained that they're okay with that. We might as well, Jonathan, do you want to weigh in quickly with a sentence or two?
Uh, sure. No, uh, lacrosse has committed to it for ten thousand dollars a year for the next five years.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah.
And, uh, Mark?
I don't see there being a problem. Um, we've not discussed any sort of financials or anything, just being that soccer doesn't have any of the extra, excess, uh, stuff that, uh, stuff that needs to go into the facility and all of that. Uh, we have, uh, offered nets and that kind of stuff for the facilities or, uh, for parts and if there was a financial, we do have, uh, finances in place for this little, uh, these two or three.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bauer, that's good.
That's all.
Okay, uh, thank you. Councillor Peterson.
Your Worship, I, I noticed our CEO had, had some more input prior to.
Mister Thackeray.
Sorry, uh, thank you councillor, thank you, Your Worship. Um, I just wanted to check in though with council to sort of, to get a consensus, are you, if you, if you're okay with how we're proposing to move forward, um, just knowing that there is risk, it is creative, um, I just wanted to get a, get a sense of if you're comfortable with our proposal.
Uh, councillor Cox and then councillor.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Peterson still.
So, so my first question is, in, in terms of the recommended option two, this would allow lacrosse to practice on the field, but not to.
Option one.
Option two would only offer them to practice on the field, but not play, correct?
Correct. If there was no boards installed, they could not play.
So what options does that leave them in the community?
Um, they would remain at the family centre arena.
I, I guess, I guess I would be interested in hearing about the viability of that for your organization, Jonathan.
Uh, not for them. It, it's not viable for them. Um, the biggest thing and actually I'm a bit disappointed with here, the boards would come out after our regular season. The goal here is to have somewhere where we could play if lacrosse had been more and, uh, improve our players' development, uh, more than just for our regular season. Uh, we have that problem state where we can only get family center during our regular season and we have nowhere to go after that. Um, having just the floors that we can throw like at a school and stuff like that, it, it's great, it gives us something, we can do a lot of stuff there, but not develop competitively.
So, so I, I, I see in the cost of the boards that, that we're looking, looking at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars at the top end and, and we have a commitment over, over a period of five years for fifty thousand, not insignificant.
And with that, like, I was explaining last week that we have, we have preseason stuff coming up already where I need to decide where we're going to go and I have to decide. So, and basically it's ten thousand dollars we spent last year hoping for space in Calgary and done us two weeks of floor time for, uh, evaluations and two preseason practices per team, uh, at the Calgary Soccer Centre. Uh, in Strathmore with the rates that we've been estimating, uh, that would take us, we would still do our two weeks of evals plus we'd probably bump up to four practices preseason per team and leave that ten thousand dollars here. So there's still things, more money from lacrosse for things like that, but until we know what we can do, we can commit to what we're doing, so.
Do you know what the anticipated growth might be? Do you have any kind of capacity to project?
Player-wise, I'm not sure. All I know is that it allows us to start the season a little bit earlier, we're allowed to develop our things, our, our practices and, and our evaluations locally, uh, instead of in Calgary. And it allows us to grow our tournament from eighteen teams for our tournament in June to twenty-four teams this year coming up and bringing in approximately another, that's what, all, three people per team, we don't invite both the teams or all come out of town, so it's another hundred and some people until the weekend, just eating meals and doing stuff like that.
Thank you. If we were going to de-venture the project, you know, you know, I, I'm really good with stormwater and this is not in my wheelhouse. So I, I really respect the opinions of councillor Corbille and, and Bauer and people who, who really understand these sports and, um, you know, my, my inclination, you know, is to be able to maximize and, and I, I hear what option two is saying in terms of the numbers, but I, I sure, uh, sure hate to see someone cut out. I, I, I don't, uh, and, and I'm troubled by having to make a decision in the moment, like, and especially because I'm so, so not, I, I, you know, not great in terms of the capacity and understanding of the scope and sequence of what you've put before us, although I understand that there is some emergent, uh, issues and I'll go with, uh, um, what is absolutely necessary. Having said that, if we were going to de-venture the project, I, I might want to look at option one.
Thank you, and I think that does give us that option where we, we don't have to go to another source of funding that we, we could look at as Mister Thackeray was mentioning that it's part of recreation and the de-venture that we've done. Uh, thank you for that councillor Peterson. Councillor Cox.
So, um, a little bit of a lead, thank you, Your Worship. Um, do you need us to decide on boards tonight or can we just decide on turf?
So councillor Cox, we don't actually need a decision on turf. Um, we've already approved the funding and we've come to a consensus with our user groups, so we, um, we know what kind of turf we want to use. If you, if council chooses to delay turf, uh, wants, want us to delay ordering and use the used stuff for a longer period of time, that would be a decision that we would, we would ask to be made. Um, our plan was to order and have it in, in April with the used turf for the first four months. the used stuff for a longer period of time, that would be a decision that we would, we would ask to be made. Um, our plan was to order and have it in, in April with the used turf for the first four months. So we, we can always delay any decision, it does impact uh, the user groups, um, knowing that there's a four month, a potentially four monthly time to get anything.
Okay, and so what, after we just heard from lacrosse, um, he's saying your option of the removable boards isn't actually going to help?
Well, it gives us another space, it's just that what I would have in boards, it just doesn't, we practice with boards. We're an indoor box lacrosse league, we don't play outdoor, we don't do field lacrosse, anything like that. It's all indoor, it's all with boards, so if we're not practicing in the facility that other people are, are playing on, it limits how much development we can actually use.
Right, but this is saying that we are taking down the boards, when?
After our regular season.
So does that impact the, the, your contributions to the facility?
I don't know. I, I don't know. Ultimately, it's, the more we can use it, the more we'll use it, so.
And perhaps soccer could speak to why they would prefer the board sound, just so you can hear, hear both sides?
My daughter's been playing soccer since she was two, yeah.
My granddaughters play soccer, I understand.
Yeah, 100%.
I learned a lot about both sports through this process and I learned that, um, because I never played either, running seems like a lot of work, um, but, no, just me, um, but I learned that Alberta is the only province in Canada that plays board soccer.
Boarding soccer, yes.
So it's really unique and I know there's a, a group of people in the soccer world who are trying to get the sport aligned with the rest of the province, which is, which is why they're, they're pushing for, for open field.
Boardless. Um, I also had a question when it came to the netting that you were talking about, because I do know, like, we play in facilities in Calgary, um, and some of them don't have nets. Do we have to have nets?
That's a great question. We're not sure.
Because the foothills facility does not have netting.
You, you're right, the foothills facility doesn't, but it, it obviously opens up for, for that purpose. Um, with no walking track around, you do, excuse me, you do always have a, have a risk of balls or anything that go adjacent to the playing area. Um, a lot of dome facilities do have a net system that either can divide the court, or sorry, the field into number of users, so you could have potentially soccer in one side of the field and frisbee or football on another side. Um, ultimately, the netting that we would propose, um, that would go around the entire field would more often just protect the, the other users of the facility and the facility itself from, uh, errant things.
Yeah, I just think that without the board, like, when they play soccer, the boards are the reason that the nets are there, because if they hit it off the board, then it's going flying. Generally, the ball's not that high, it's not actually leaving the ground that much, so it's not really needed if there's no boards.
But the netting's-
That's kind of my thought process.
Sorry, the netting's more for the lacrosse balls, isn't it? Isn't that a real danger?
Well, obviously with lacrosse, it's, it's definitely a, a more, uh, need that you have the, the, the net in there, but the netting that we propose for an open field would just be to protect the, the users of the, the rest of the facility, um, the, any particip-, any spectators, anybody on the walking track as, as the worship spoke about earlier this, earlier.
But definitely lacrosse needs nets, because the, their balls, um, are hard.
Hard.
And dangerous. And fast, yes.
Thank you, and thank you councillor Cox. Uh, that brings us to councillor Montgomery and then deputy mayor Bauer.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so my question's a bit off topic, but um, uh, the-
Seniors?
Yeah, how can we reduce the amount of money we give to seniors? Um, no, I saw, it's actually the outdoor, the outdoor rink. Is there any groups that use the outdoor rink in the summer?
Um, so the outdoor rink is a non-bookable space and so it's just open to first come, first served.
Okay.
Um, and one of the reasons it was built that way is due to the, some of the grant funding that was, um, received for that, it was allocated for non-bookable kind of public play. Yeah, so, so they, they are welcome to drop in and use it, but they, they do not book it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you councillor Montgomery. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Oh my goodness, I'm really, really struggling with this. Um, so there is one variable that I do not see any longer on this list of expenses and it's that polymer, um, flooring that you talked about, the sport flooring. Have you taken that out of the equation now?
We have, um-
So that saves us 135,000.
I feel like it was a bit of a long moment for me. Um, it's a really expensive floor and it's really versatile, but we'd cover it up eight months of the year with turf.
Okay.
So it didn't really seem like a feasible choice and I, I apologize for not thinking about that before we brought it. So it's no longer something we think is a good idea.
Okay, that's great. So that's a savings of 135,000, right?
No, that was going to be closer to like 200.
Ah, that's even better, okay. Um, and then when we were in there today, uh, for the unveiling of Magnum Cement, the sponsorship, um, we noticed that there's that sport flooring for the, the basketball on that one side.
Mm-hmm.
Will that stay? That, there was that metal bar-
Oh, the transition?
And then the transition to the sport flooring?
Yep.
Will that be staying?
Yes.
Right there?
Yeah, so the, the artificial turf would go very close to that transition between the sport courts, a sport floor and gymnasium-
Yep.
-to the artificial turf.
So when you're in the facility and you look up and you see the drop curtain?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the way the facility was designed was for the kind of top end of the playing surface to almost butt right up to there, so if the boards were installed, it would be right next to that, that curtain.
Okay, that's good. Um, and then the other question is, when I was involved with, with lacrosse, and I would just like to ask, uh, your worship, if I could please direct my question to Jonathan, if I may, um, it was a 12-week season, but are you saying that now you're doing lacrosse for much longer than the 12 weeks?
Uh, the season itself, the regular season is still the same.
Yes.
Um, we have our winter lacrosse coming up that we need, we want to start in January. Um, now, now that we don't have a facility for that anymore, which is very disappointing.
So you no longer have a facility in Calgary to do it?
Well, no, well, we used to use Trinity School for it, but they put a new license on the lacrosse balls in there now.
Oh.
Yeah, that was something we found out yesterday. Um, so that's a problem that we're trying to sort of now. Um, we started, last year was the earliest we started our season. We, we did our evaluations in around the second, third week, second week of March and then that left us April to get our two preseason practices in per team. We actually want to increase that to four. Um, city teams are playing now. Uh, they, they have their winter programs going now, in January they do their evaluations, February they're starting practices, they practice February, March, April, and then usually the season starts end of April, really. And then it runs to the 12 weeks. Uh, it's actually running into the first week of July this year, uh, coincides with Canada Day Tournament, then on, and just for that, so.
Okay, and then my last question for you would be, would you be able to use the sports center and the arena?
We will be.
You will be? You will, your plan is to book both?
Our plan is to continue with the two surfaces of the arena. Um, the gold arena, the, the gold arena as family center is where our juniors go play their games. Um, there's a bar upstairs, so the fans like to be able to hear. Um, so, and for some of our bigger hype, bigger games where we're going to have a lot of spectators, um, the gold arena is much more suited for that. Uh, but our plan is to spread for the regular season out to the three floors and then expand things like our tournaments, our, and then our, our, oh, the season, uh, things like doing our own camps instead of sending people to Calgary for joining with a camp at Sabre Pass or somewhere.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you deputy mayor Bauer. Councillor Corville?
Thank you, your worship. Okay, so we wouldn't be able to get the boards until April anyway, right?
At, at the-
Earliest?
Yes.
Yeah, no, okay, that's fine. So realistically, we would have both floors open for beginning of January of next year, right?
Both floors?
Well, because we're, I'm talking about the footsall field as well, right? Because that isn't available probably for a while, right?
No, so the, unfortunately, the footsall field concrete is still being-
Yep.
-finicky and so, uh, we have no plans for that field for January.
Oh, yeah.
It would be concrete.
Absolutely. And I'm not saying that, I, I was just kind of, I'm kind of starting, I guess, this year we kind of, I think, make do with what we will be able to do. I'm, I'm thinking kind of long-term, whereas January, soccer can technically play on both, right? But they would, we aren't putting boards in the footsall field at all, like we can't, right? And we wouldn't want to.
Correct.
Okay. Would some of the other organizations that can't use boards be able to use that field?
Uh, it's a much smaller space councillor Corville, so, um, they would have to modify any of their games or practices, uh, similar to, um, you know, kind of like I said, cutting down the courts or the field into thirds or something like that. Um, obviously, um, you know, the, the best people to ask would be one of the user groups here, how, how there's, how they would change, um, their, their practices or their usage of a, of a smaller area versus a bigger one.
My, the only reason, and I'm not sure if we actually get a say in it or not, if we were only putting the boards up through May to July, I don't know if necessarily we even need to decide that today, if it's not even going to happen for this year regardless, right?
Absolutely.
Are we only just deciding then if we're wanting to buy boards or not? Is that basically what we're being asked, right?
Correct. Yeah, so the operating model and the decisions we make can be made at a later date, it can also be kind of on a case by, not case by case, but we can make a decision-
Yep.
-for one year and then reevaluate.
Yep.
There's nothing set in stone-
Absolutely.
-in our world.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Councillor Sobel, thanks councillor Corville.
Thank you. Um, when we talk about forging new path and doing something nobody else is doing, are we talking about replaceable, the removable boards? I, I, I'm trying to figure out how we would do this without having removable boards. Would that, if, if we had permanent boards, would that not affect the trade show? A potential trade show?
Technically, all boards, whether exactly at the family center are removable, um, it's just that no facility, very few facilities do that, um, just because of the, the labor and the costs associated with it. Um, now, like, if we, as I said before, if we have a trade show, only portions of the, of the boards would be removed to allow access to, um, to that, that field.
It, it, you're, but you're right councillor Sobel, it limits the trade show to within those boards, it doesn't open it, it, it creates more, um, let's say somebody wanted to do a trade show in the whole building, it definitely becomes more piecemealed, which is, which is doable. Um, you know, you go to a large conference like at the BMO Center and they have all those halls. It'd kind of be similar, but on a smaller scale.
Okay, and second of all, um, I, I know we talked about asking soccer and I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna carry on since we're bringing everybody in anyway. Uh, I, I, I just got to know whether or not, um, it's even possible to play with boards. I know it's possible to play with boards.
Obviously it is.
I, I guess I'm wondering what your guys' position is.
It is, uh, like Mark has mentioned, soccer is going away from it mainly for a safety factor. Unlike lacrosse, we don't have, we don't have all that kind of stuff. Um, the only reason it's not being pushed publicly or really the next transition type thing is because of the, it's very expensive to take down, build. Uh, the new foothills facility is a perfect example of where things are going, they built that, City of Calgary is building another one, or covering over another one at Shoalness Park. Um, yes, we can, but our board alone is really pushing away from it. Chestmere is set totally against it and we're, myself and Chestmere are part of the district as well, so, yes, we can use it, costs, structure is there and all that sort of thing, and the biggest thing is the safety factor. Um, my son personally has gotten boarded every single game to the point of having a golden for shoulder working stuff out now because of having boards and that sort of thing. Um, I don't know if that necessarily answered your question.
No, you're right, thank you.
It's just the, the safety factor that soccer is trying to win this year.
Thank you for that councillor Sobel. So, uh, procedural question to Jen, uh, would we be looking at a motion to rise and report at this time if we're going to look at approving this board purchase through the de-venture?
Uh, your worship, as you have members of the public in your audience.
So councillor, if you've heard enough and have discussed enough, councillor Cox, you're ready to make a motion?
No, your worship, I, I'm looking for a little bit more clarity as to what we're making the motion on.
Well, I think it would be the motion to purchase the board system with storage and netting at this point.
And netting?
Option, well-
Like option one or option two?
Well, I think option, they have the budget to rent the turf, do they not? They've budgeted for that, so I think it would just be option one, including, concerning the board's storage and netting. It'd be option one if, councillor Montgomery.
Sorry, would, would it be problematic, I, I'm, I'm sorry if this was explained, but would it be problematic if we waited until next week to decide this?
Just in terms of delaying any, any purchase and installation.
Okay, like, I would feel more comfortable if we deferred until next week, if you guys are fine with that.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Um, we're still going ahead with renting the turf from Chestmere though, so we can get going for January, correct?
That was our-
They need to have that moved, yeah.
We would like that to be moved.
Right now?
Yeah.
Can we do that at least?
But I, sorry, I thought you had that in your budget already, you had budgeted to rent it.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
So if that's the case, you wouldn't need a motion from us. Thank you.
We can, uh-
We are going ahead with the rental of the turf from Chestmere and we're all good.
Councillor Montgomery?
Uh, I, I will move we, uh-
We're in committee.
Oh, that, oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah, so that's what I would-
We could just accept this as information as well as the other items and then have it brought back.
And ask it to bring back next week.
Perfect, okay. Councillor Sobel?
Uh, there's a point of order?
No, I'm not that interested in it.
Uh, not to confuse this anymore, but do, are you also looking for a motion to order the new turf?
Um, no.
Or that was part in there too?
It's already been approved by, by council in a previous motion.
Or the original.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So we'll have that brought back December 19th. Thank you for presenting and we will examine it then. That brings us to 6.6, update on informal snow dump. Mr. Roycroft, is that you or Ethan, sorry? Welcome.
I will try and keep this one quick. Um, so I'm here tonight just to give you a quick update on our snow dump, how we do things currently and how we are intending to do things moving forward, um, or would like to do things moving forward, I should say. Um, so currently, snow is dumped in the pivot fields, near the north portion of the fields. Um, the contractors accessed the area beside the electrical plant there and snow is pretty much dumped free will. Um, it is locked, but the number of keys out there are unknown. Um, who uses it is also unknown, so, um, and with this, we've found that there is garbage that comes with the snow that shouldn't be there. Um, and also moving forward is the project for solar, which would take up the space that we're using, so. Um, what is being proposed is moving the snow dump area farther south. Um, this would be down into the south end of the pivot fields into what is informally going to be pond seven in the future of our stormwater system. Um, there is an access route down this way that currently exists and all that would really be needed is some work to just provide access off of that road into the field. Um, what the intent would be is that January through April or the remainder of this winter season would be that the town would use the new space, um, we could work out any kinks that would go along with it, um, make sure that access is adequate, that sort of thing. And then into September or next winter season, um, that would be where all snow dumping would be. Um, the intent would be to make this space available to anybody, but control it in a manner that works for the town. Um, the proposal would be to implement some sort of permit. Um, a fee could be used, um, that fee would have to be determined, whether it's a single fee for every user or whether it's a staged fee based on the size of the company kind of thing. Um, in that way, we would know who is able to use the space as well as who has access to the space, so if somebody is in there that shouldn't be in there, we are able to call them out on it, sort of thing. Um, this would be a solution until pond seven is required and constructed. Um, once that happens, the thought would be to create a space just north of pond seven, which would be more formal. Um, it could come with a formal settling pond with things that, sorry, the, the runoff or the meltwater would then go into the storm pond and- the meltwater would then go into the storm pond and dilute and go back into the natural system. So, um, that would be something that would be many years down the road. The intent right now is to get out of the way of this future project where our snow dump area would no longer be accessible, move into a newer area, better control of the spaces moving forward and small coup of cost for maintaining this space, so. That's the brief presentation for you.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I believe Counselor Montgomery was first and then it's all read.
Thank you very much, Ethan, for that. I like the visuals again, so thank you for that. Um, and I'm sure you guys have discussed this, but, so we don't have to worry about like any, you know, like contaminants or even like, you know, the garbage, uh, you know, going into Pond Seven's location?
We have the garbage now and it will be cleaned up or needs to be cleaned up. As far as contaminants into the water system, when it comes to snow melt areas, there isn't a specific you must do this. As far as getting into irrigation water use or getting into water courses, then that's when you get into systems of having to control this. And when I talked about the kind of final state when Pond Seven's implemented and we were formally going into that dump to dilute it, that's definitely a case where we would have to ensure, you know, the amount of saline and other items within that meltwater that would have to be ensured that is controlled and not over the limits going into the water system.
Okay. And, and yeah, I definitely like the idea of charging people for dumping their stuff.
Of course he does. Senior's the devil.
Thanks, Counselor Montgomery. Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the, uh, I'm, I'm very much in favor as well of a fee being charged, but, but would like to see it, uh, put away for remediation and, and reclamation. And, and the other, the other question I have, you know, once Pond Seven is established and we'll still be using the Namaika location as, as a pond that then goes into, winds up in the, in the area referred to as Stobart on Sixica and then into the outfall, my, one of my understandings about, about snow cleaning is that, that it is a major source of pollutant, of phosphate and, and heavy metal and, and so on. And if we put it on the, place it on the north side of Pond Seven or if we place Pond Seven where we're dumping those pollutants, I think that, you know, just because there aren't parameters doesn't mean that there should be. And, and I guess I worry about mitigating factors around that and what that means to future pollution into that, into that outfall eventually.
Yeah. So what would be proposed is when the design of Pond Seven formally happens, um, right now we're doing a geotechnical investigation of the area for the future construction of that, would be to have it designed so that items are mitigated as they go through. I did some research into the storm, or sorry, the snow dump location in Lethbridge, which they've recently built, and it goes from a meltwater into a settling pond into an oil grit separator. There, there's many steps before it hits the natural water stream.
The next pond, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's my concern.
So, and using Pond Seven as a way to dilute those.
A settling pond?
Well, no, the settling pond could be before that.
Gotcha.
And then Pond Seven could also be used to dilute the levels, to bring them down.
So it's down the road, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. Counselor Cox?
Sorry about that.
No, I don't care.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, my questions are a little, um, when are we moving to this new place?
The thought would be January of 2019 for the town only. Um, that way we can kind of work out some kinks if there are any, um, make sure the space is formally delineated so we're not getting dumping just anywhere, um, and kind of set up the access requirements before we start getting into the permit situation for next fall.
Okay. And then my next stage of that question is how are we shutting off the old one? So how are we, because there's too many keys out there and so on and so forth, but we do need to close that off come January as well?
I think there's gonna be, no, come January, the private contractors will still use that space.
Okay.
Over the summer months of 2019 is when we can re-control that space, whether it be change the locks or new fence or however we see that best works. Um, and then all the private contractors would have to come get the permit to get the key to get access to the new space come fall of 2019.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Corbion?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question. Have we actually done any kind of samples where we are dumping our snow and we have been for however long? Like, do we know what we are moving close to Pond Seven?
I, I don't know if we have formally, no.
Uh, Your Worship, with regards to that, um, I will say right now we follow what is pretty likely the worst possible practices for that, and so I want to commend staff for starting to move us to a better, uh, a better approach. We haven't formally sampled it, however, um, as part of SolarCraft projects, they've done a lot of environmental works out there and I haven't found anything that's triggered them to have to do any remediation yet or talk to us about it, so.
That's very good of you.
That's, was a happy boy that day. Um, and fortunately they are doing a lot of environmental works out there, so we're, we've dodged a bullet, but I'd really rather not stick to worse practices anymore.
Thank you. Counselor Corbion, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, I guess so. I guess so for now, whatever. I would like to, yeah, make sure that we make, maybe go, I know there aren't restrictions, but yeah, like.
To build it in.
I think that we should. I think that we should kind of know what we're setting ourselves up for, so, thanks.
Thank you. And just before I go back to Counselor Montgomery, I had a question for you as far as the new location. Is there a cost factor as far as, do you have to do new fencing on it, create a roadway into it, or are there?
No, it, from what we've seen, it's very limited. Like I said, we'd have to maybe move a bit of dirt just to improve the access off of the road that's already there into the field, but otherwise it sounds like there's very minimal that we'll need to do.
Okay, thank you. I don't know.
Yeah, sorry. And then Craig's mentioning, we'll do it all internally.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Did you want to ask that, right, while following me?
The, the access road you're talking about, is that the one on the, on the east side of the pivot field?
Essentially George Freeman Trail.
The one that goes down to the, George Freeman Trail?
Yeah.
So not, not the one that's on Donnie Knight's side?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Montgomery, then Deputy Mayor Bauer.
Thank you. Could I suggest you guys get like maybe some, uh, motion activated trail cameras just to, well, no, like I'm, so like just to track who's actually going in there dumping snow so that, um, either, like if they dump something they shouldn't, you can track down who did it, or even just as part of, uh, yeah, figuring out who is using it? Cause if you guys are gonna move, you know, your snow dumping to a different location, it would probably, you know, benefit us to know who is actually using, using the other snow dump, so, you know, you can get those for pretty cheap, so I would suggest it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
I think we can look at that.
Do, do we have anything, that's a good point, Counselor Montgomery, do we have anything built in or could be added as far as a fining system if people are throwing, putting garbage in there?
I think when we look into the permit fee and what we think is, you know, reasonable, we could look at that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just would like to ask you, Ethan, if, oh, if I could, um, ask Craig a question. Um, I understand, and this might help Counselor Corbion, because I understand that you've been asking, you've been using a pickling mix on the roads, um, up till now, but you're going to go to a new mix, which is a little bit more environmental or melt snow differently or something, I heard.
No, no, it was not. There was still many ingredients, uh, composition, which is about 95% sand and 5% salt, until we get the equipment that can handle what we want to go through.
Okay. So that is down the road.
That's still, uh, at the same time when they look to, uh, on seven, up to three years ago.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
I just wanted to clarify along Jason's line. Once we move to the new place, the old place is being finished and then the new place is going to allow permits.
Yes.
So we will know who's using it. So isn't that a waste?
Well, if you're, if you're paying attention, you're saying, well, how are we living there? We're made up this zone in the new location and because there's so many people out there that don't know who's using it in this new location, it will be continued to use by the existing location.
Yes, but only for a few months when, then it will end, if you were listening.
Correct. Unless there's most snow on the ground, we won't have the trust.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's move right along. So we're understanding you, um, and it's gonna be starting this January?
That's intended, yes.
Okay. And you're gonna finish out the season with the existing lot, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you for presenting the information and, uh, we'll move on to the next one, which is 6.7, the 2019 to 2021 budget. Is Counsel okay with a quick two-minute recess?
Uh, can I move, we come out of committee of the whole, please?
Um, all in favor? Now we're in the public meeting.
All right. Uh, can we, uh, I'll move, we extend the meeting till 10:30.
Okay. Thank you. You've all heard the motion to extend the meeting. All in favor? And we'll take a quick recess. And we'll take a quick recess. We're back in session in the public meeting, and Counselor Corbier, sorry, Counselor Montgomery.
I'll move, we go back into committee of the whole.
Thank you, you've all heard the motion to go back into committee of the whole, all in favor? And we are back in committee of the whole. Mr. Tiede, welcome, and I appreciate your patience to go through the marathon tonight.
Thank you, your worship. So we have the outline of the materials contained within the PowerPoint presentation that we'll be covering, and I'll attempt to go through it real quickly here. So for the historical review, it covers a number of things that have occurred over the last long period of time. Couple of the important things on this page is one that we have made an investment of $100 million with major infrastructure. The MGA requires annual budgets, our property tax revenue on an adjusted annual basis has increased six tenths of 1% over a ten-year period on average. And that is significantly less than the average rate of inflation. And so the bottom line is, really, it's a reduction in revenues over the last decade and a half. Next slide, please.
No, your worship, you don't have the PowerPoint presentation. Would you like, because your screens aren't working, would you like copies of those to follow through? So we'll need a one-minute recess.
Next page, please. So from 2012 to 2018, that just shows the average annual residential tax adjustment of .6%. Next page, please. Now that's two. Back one. So over that same time period, the CPI index has increased by 1.8%, but our spending has increased by 13.3% over the, over 10 years. Next slide, please. Sorry. The strategic plan we've adopted in 2017, the first long-term financial plan, gives us a framework for full disclosure. We're attempting to make decisions measured against an overall vision, mission, and values. Also in 2017, the Canada 150 program was actioned, and human resources plan. We're attempting to be responsive to the community. Council developed a strategic plan within the first 180 days of their mandate with the themes of active and vibrant community, enhanced community facilities, and quality of services being developed. As far as accomplishments, the new aquatic facility enhancement, there's new ball fields at three locations. We've brought online the SMP Sports Center, it's about to open. We will be receiving in the area of $1 million annually from the solar farm in taxation and leases, but that's down the road, probably two years. We're attempting to establish new and sustainable reserves, and we're working on the municipal management system, and that's been referenced already earlier this evening. Transform, transformational governance. In the spring, we're going to be undertaking a qualitative and quantitative citizen poll. It's going to be statistically validated. We've embarked on the new garbage pickup system and the organics pickup system. Downtown streets have been enhanced with seniors' accessibility and visually. There's enhanced school pedestrian crossings, new trails for Grays Park, Strathmore Pond, and Trails Master Plan funding. We're embarking on seniors' housing partnership. Also included is the Economic Development Program and an EDO along with the Fire Services Master Plan and five new fire emergency service positions. The long-term financial plan implements responsible financial management as directed by the strategic plan. Creates funding certainty and transparency for citizens. Takes a long-term horizon perspective to provide sustainable funding to existing programs and services. Directly supports the statutory requirements in the MGA of the three-year and five-year operating and capital budget. It eliminates wide fluctuations and spikes in property taxes and achieves new funding models or substantially reduces subsidies on fee-based programs and services. The financial strategy also. Self-supporting utilities, full recovery of expenses on utilities, predictability on taxes, predictability of revenue and expenditures, partner funding specifically with the county on the CRISP funding. And one important component is equity between residential and non-residential taxation. To have commercial taxation cover a bigger portion of the budget and reduce reliance somewhat for residential. The budget contains $11.8 million for a capital program, town hall, infrastructure renewal, and Kinsman Park enhancements. The balanced operational budget of $37 million. Increasing service levels with the SMP Sports Center and increasing public works coverage for snow management, contribution to reserves for long-term physical sustainability and the introduction of a seniors' tax rebate program. Some of the pressures that we've experienced, and we've talked a little bit about this during workshop sessions, new employment standards legislation, the ever-increasing RCMP costs. One that we didn't really talk a lot about, the new standards in the Aquatic Center regarding the number of people required compared to the number of patrons in the pool. And the operational costs for the sports center. Altogether, those four are about $1 million a year in additional cost pressures. The current replacement cost for the Family Center, Aquatic Center, and Civic Center is estimated to be between $45 and $50 million. We have $250 million in tangible capital assets with an infrastructure deficit of approximately $44 million. We've covered that in the past. With a proposed long-term financial plan and multi-year budgeting, we have a strong strategy for renewal and reinvestment. And planned maintenance carried out over the life of an asset is less costly than life-extending maintenance to prolong the life of an asset, where we've had that, we've seen that before. 2019 budget pressures. So the deficit in 2018 for the Family Center, Aquatic Center, and Civic Center, $2.79 million. In 19, with the addition of the Sports Center, that grows to $3,214,000. And that equates to approximately 25%, 26% of our net municipal tax revenue. So almost 25% of our, the dollars that come to the town for use goes to support those facilities this coming year. Just a slide that speaks to investments and reserves and working capital. So our total investments at the end of November, $19,700,000. We have a reserve balance currently of $10.7 million. And so the difference is what we have for working capital to pay the bills until the next, whoopsie, tax year comes around. Even though we're collecting some of our taxation monthly, a good part of it comes annually in June, the end of June. The proposed capital budget for administration, $4.6 million. Big part of that is for the spend on the town hall, and the town hall is over two years. Fire services, $250,000 for the replacement of Engine 2 and some software and additional equipment. For recreation, $2.2 million for new pathways, outdoor recreation facilities, Kinsman Park enhancements, and some building upgrades. Common services, new operations yard expansion and some equipment to be purchased. Roads, just under $1 million. Slater Way paving, George Freeman Trail carryover, and the wheelchair ramp program. Water, $1.3 million for renewal on Lakeside Boulevard and some water main replacements, and also Bayview and Glenwood utility main replacements. The operational budget is approximately $37 million. And the spend is outlined, infrastructure, 19%. Operations, 16, requisitions, 15. Community safety enforcement and fire, 14%, administration, 13, and recreation, 11. And then planning development, 4, and so on. The revenue sources. Strathmore, like many other communities, the net municipal taxes is the largest source of revenue, 49%. Utilities, 27%. User fees for, and sale of goods and services, 13%. Investment income, 1%, license and permits, 2, other revenue, 3, and government transfers. If we want to look at our expenditures a little bit differently, our staffing costs are 35%. Our contracted and general services, 31. Requisitions, 15%. Material goods and supplies and utilities, almost 11%. Interest and principal, 4.1%, not a large portion of our budget there. And so on. These four items were items that were discussed towards the end of the workshop period. Allocating $100,000 to reserves, hiring, a hiring freeze for 2020. Incorporating a grant funding request for the gymnastics club, and that was in the area of $34,000, I thought. And developing a seniors' tax rebate program, and that's been included at $40,000. With an income threshold to qualify, they must live in their home and have their taxes in good standing. Just a couple of notes pertaining to that program. So the draft 2019-2021 budget was prepared with the following key considerations. The need for funding for continued maintenance for infrastructure. The need for contributions to reserves. Recognizing dependency on external grants is not sustainable, particularly with the MSI and the potential projected loss of one-third of MSI being eliminated in the future. So we tried to rate the, each of the options that will be before us. Low sustainability includes some reduction in service options. A mid-sustainability, maintain current service levels. And a better sustainability with reserves and replacing MSI into the future. So option A, with low sustainability, 3.9% residential adjustment for taxes, 5.9% non-residential. Total revenue of, tax revenue of $18,260,000. Would require a reduction of service. So two examples might be fire service reduction or public works and public works. So the outfall from that is no provision for reserve investment, reinvestment. Does not anticipate reduction in provincial grants. Does not provide equity and fairness to homeowners. Aligns with municipal government. That's one positive thing, it complies with the three-year budget and provides predictable funding and job security for staff. So the increase for a resident, residential assessed value, the annual increase would be $68. And for a commercial property assessed at $3 million, the yearly increase would be $1,206, or $100 a month, and $6 a month for non-residential and residential. Option B, 4.9% residential increase, non-residential increase, 9.9%. Total tax revenue, $18,298,000. $226,000 invested in reserves total, and that would be an additional $101,000 compared to option C that we'll be looking at momentarily. So this aligns with the 2019 proposed financial plan. It leverages the additional 3% of non-residential taxation to reserves. It anticipates the reduction of provincial grant funding. It moves the scale a bit for providing equity and fairness to homeowners. Aligns with the provincial government mandate of a three-year budget and replaces MSI grant funding and starts to build a reserve base incrementally within our budget. And so the residential increase in taxation would be $85 annually, or $7 a month. And for a $3 million assessed property, the increase would be $2,024, or $168 a month. Option C, the mid-sustainability option. The residential increase again would be 4.9%. Non-residential, 6.9%. Total tax revenue, $18,197,000. $125,000 invested in reserves in this case. It's consistent with our long-term financial plan and the prior year taxation. Does not achieve the 50% non-residential differential. It moves in that direction, but not, not that far. Provides equity and fairness to homeowners. Achieves current service levels without cuts and aligns with the municipal. and aligns with the municipal government of a three-year budget. The increase for residential again would be $85, or $7 a month. For the non-residential, $1,410 annually, or $117 a month. That concludes the slides.
So, with the presentation over, does council want to take away the materials and discuss more fully before deciding on an option at the December 19th meeting? Is that a sense of what you folks were saying? Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Yes, Your Worship. I would like to take the information away and then come back next week at the regular council meeting to make a decision.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think that's a good point, Counselor Peterson, that we would need to be able to make a decision on that December 19th. That would be a crucial thing to avoid interim finance or interim budget.
Yes, Your Worship.
Thank you. So, thank you for your presentation and your patience tonight. We appreciate it. We'll take away all the materials and be ready for next week. Counselor Sobel?
I just wanted to comment. That's, that's an excellent PowerPoint. Is there, is there a chance we can get that onto our website? You're already editing on it? At least it's not in there yet, yes.
You could use that for the tax video for this. That's really good.
Actually, yeah. I think it's, it's just, it's very encompassing and very informative. I think it's a, it's a really well-done document. I'd sure like to see it on there.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
I also concur with Counselor Sobel that I would like to see that. There's so much information in there that is good for our public of where we're spending, where we have spent, even the initiatives that we have done just in the last year and a half. And being able to let the people know that this is part of our strategic plan and we are actually taking off some of those boxes. So, we have a little bit of celebration to do as well. And thank you to administration for, for supporting us in those endeavors. And thank you to Mel. That was, I don't know if Val helped you with that, but that was stellar.
Others helped create that, for sure.
I also have another question, Your Worship. And if we have questions regarding that PowerPoint and just questions before the next meeting that can be answered, who would we direct those to? Straight to you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Thackeray.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. Your efforts and your staff, I'd much appreciate it too, Mel. Thank you, and administration. Which brings us to what could be one of our final items tonight. Item 6.8, the Environmental Sustainability Policy, Number 8100, Anti-IDling. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will be super quick. I would say about a year ago, council instructed administration to bring back a bylaw in regards to anti-idling. After a lot of thought and contemplation on the matter, administration is recommending to council rather a policy change in regard to anti-idling. In your package, there is amendments to the environmental sustainability policy for council to consider. Basically, the change is implement that, that we create community programs and initiatives. And it gives the responsibilities of who's responsible for that. But a lot of those initiatives could include things like anti-idling programs, waste reduction programs, and water conservation initiatives. The reason we're recommending moving to a policy rather than a bylaw is because we'd like to take a, more of an educational stance on anti-idling rather than an enforcement stance. So, that is what we're presenting to you tonight. It's here for your information tonight, and we're recommending that council. Well, we will be bringing it to the December 19th meeting for council's adoption.
Thank you. Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes. This is, this was a really tough one for administration. It was sort of given to them by the Sustainability Committee. And we've awaited this, this policy. And I, I gotta say, I for one, I'm, I'm very pleased the way this administration has responded with this. And, and the only other thing I'd like to say is I, I think sustainability would welcome the opportunity to, to take this to the next step once this policy's in place. And, and provide administration and council with some suggestions as to how we can further this policy and, and provide some education to the, to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Deputy Mayor Bauer?
Thank you, Your Worship. I looked at other communities and what they were doing with anti-idling. And I really, really liked the approach that you took with this, with, with the education and the policy rather than a hard and fast bylaw. And, and part of the reason was when I looked at what was happening in our community, we have a truck stop on Number 1. And, and it is essential for those people to, well, they believe, and rightly or wrongly, but they believe that if, you know, they don't idle during the winter and they leave their, their truck and they come back, they can't, you know, start it, they will lose business and time, and time is money and all of that stuff. And so, I really like this approach because it allows our downtown business district, which is mostly affected by the idling, because we have very, you know, poorly insulated walls and, and the construction is not as, as heavy as some of the other areas in the town. And it allows them to be aware of this types of, type of policy. So, I, I really support this and, and I like that you've done the educational approach.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bauer. Counselor Peterson?
When this came up a year ago, I did lots of research. And one of the things that I found was that anti-idling bylaws were as useless as, really useless. And, and so, but one of the best sites that I ever saw, that I came across was a site called What Works for Health. And it is out of Wisconsin, but it talks about anti-idling initiatives and, and how the only thing that does work is courtesy promotion and education. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peterson. And thank you for not finishing that sentence, too. I know you did. And I'm very, very proud of you. So, I believe that'll be, that'll be coming to us later. And so, at this time, there's no urgent business, I don't believe. We have no in-camera items. So, I'm looking for a motion to come out of, come out of committee of the whole. Counselor Corbion?
I move to come out of committee of the whole.
Thank you. Mr. Thackeray?
Can I make a very short statement?
Yes, you can.
I'll be really short. I want to thank Mel for presenting tonight and all the hard work that he did on the crunching the numbers. I want to thank Val for supporting all of that and coming up with some great numbers and scenarios. I want to thank Jennifer for working her butt off today, helping put together the, the presentation today. And it was a team effort. And I'm really, really grateful. And everybody worked their you-know-what off today. And I'm really proud of us because we lived, we're actually living what we're saying in our culture and our values. And it's really inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Thackeray. So, we have a motion to come out of committee of the whole, all in favor? Motion is carried. Counselor Corbion?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor. And we are adjourned at 10:02.